The committee meeting to order July 15, 2024. We will now have the pledge of allegiance and I will lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think everyone's had a chance to look over their agenda and look over their policies since Ms. Monica got those out in a very timely manner and we do appreciate that. Do I have any questions about the agenda or anything that we see that needs changing? Or you just want to go in order for the 800 pages? Okay. Then do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Please approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? The agenda is approved. Before we go into the policy changes, we do have a speaker, Ms. Melissa Lotta. Is that right? Tell me how to pronounce it. Lotta, okay. That's what I thought. If you want to come on forward and pull your mic down because you're little like me. There you go. Okay. Thank you.
My name is Melissa. Oh, do I need to push?
No, you don't have to do anything. We got you. But when that turns red, you can't talk anymore.
Yes, ma'am. I have two kids that attend Eagleville School. My son is an upcoming freshman. At the beginning of last year, we were given the option to take both Spanish and Algebra I in the eighth grade. We received a letter about this and you would have thought my son got a college acceptance letter. He was very excited. Just a few days later, we received a call that Spanish was no longer an option. Administration stated it was a Central Office decision. Central Office informed us it was our administration. Either way, it was no longer an option, but we weren't notified until the day before school started, so there was nothing that could be done. Schedules were made. In the letter, it stated Rutherford County Board Policy 4.604, students enrolled in grades nine through 12 who have taken the equivalent of a high school level course. The school may earn high school credit for graduation except in American history by successfully completing the state board required high school credit as evidenced by a passing grade in the course prior to grade nine. To me, this was vague and I wanted to stress the importance of this to my son, so I reached out to our administration and confirmed with them that the Algebra I course actually did count toward his GPA. They heard the policy was changed and it would in fact count toward his based on the policy change. My son successfully completed this course with an overall grade of a 99 as well as a 99 on his EOC, again with the understanding this would go toward his GPA. Fast forward to our high school orientation where Mr. Pettigo informed us that it did in fact not count for anything other than a pass fail and a credit for high school and that it was mandated by the state. That is not correct information. I called other school districts, one being Williamson County, and they were aware that this would be an issue, so this policy was changed a few years ago. Why is Rutherford County so behind in making this change? Not a single parent was aware of this, not one of us. I went back and reread the letter that was sent from Central Office again and it was not clear only. On top of this, my son has goals to play college baseball and in some capacity. According to the NCAA, in a pass fail grading situation, the NCAA Eligibility Center assigned your school's lowest passing grade for a course in which the student received a pass grade. This only applies to core classes. So despite the fact that my son earned a 99% in this class, the NCAA will only see this as a D at best. This could be a deciding factor of a scholarship looking into the future. I called the NCAA to confirm that this was accurate and they said that it was, and the only way to rectify this would be for Rutherford County schools to count that grade. Jumping forward, the reason I'm here before you today is that I ask you to reconsider this decision to have this class as more than just a pass fail and it actually count toward his GPA and at least give the class of 2028 the option to count this grade if they wish to. Again, this would be a difference in my son's future in college.
Finish your sentence.
Thank you. Again, this would be a difference in my son's future college and receiving a scholarship by not allowing him to receive the credit for the grade he earned.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you coming forward. Going to turn this over to Ms. Monica.
Thank you. I hope everybody ate their Wheaties this morning. I have a big agenda. I think this might be the biggest one that I've had since I've been here. So I've also indicated that all these policies, we will be asking to be approved on one reading by the board and that is because it is necessary for them to take effect before the start of the 24, 25 school year. So I just want to make everyone aware. A lot of these are pursuant to-
Ms. Ridley, do you want to point out that that's not tomorrow and Wednesday? It is the August meeting.
Yes, August 8th meeting. A lot of these changes are because state law has changed and so I have tried to indicate that off of your agenda and I will try to go over the changes in state law tonight also, just so that the legislature did pass a lot of what's bills this year that affect education. So here we go. For visitors to be willing to change in state law. You see there is the proposed changes. It requires the Director of Schools to develop a visitor code of conduct to be presented to the Board Attorney and then approved by the Board, which we are working on that. We'll have that to the Board shortly. It requires that this visitor code of conduct, district's website, at the school's website and be posted at this school. It also requires that it be provided to everybody, all our staff, and requires that the district provide parents with a printed copy of the code of conduct. Now, we've had a version of a visitor code of conduct in the past, but does it really change? Of course, you know, cursing, obscenities, threatening violence, safety, things like that, we will not allow by our visitors. So we've always had that in place, but this is here for all our stakeholders.
Questions or comments about this policy? Yes, sir?
We also have in place an admin procedure that before a principal or someone, unless it's a life or death situation, before they, and we don't call it ban, we call it restrict access, before they restrict access to somebody that they have to talk to myself, legal and Patty first.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Darby?
I have a couple of questions. Dr. Sullivan, are you planning on just going with these five that are listed here? Number nine on the second page references non-student brothers or sisters being brought to school needs to be done by your designated, but then out of town visitors by the principal? I'm just curious if that shouldn't be the same person or if there was a particular reason why one is one and one is the other? Or if it's just old?
Probably since 2009 would be my guess. I don't have a preference either way for that.
That's a good question.
It seemed odd, like-
Interesting. So I don't know if we want to just designate one or the other or if you just want them to say the same thing. It just seemed odd that one was one and one was the other.
Because honestly, in that case, the designee is going to be the school level principal.
Which is kind of what I, so should it just say that for both options?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that doesn't have a TCA footnote attached.
So do we strike Director of Schools and put in or his designee, comma, the principal?
So you just make it the same as be submitted?
To the principal?
Yep.
Okay. But do you want us to strike the Director of Schools?
Yep.
Okay.
So would we want it to read, "Students may not bring non-student brothers or sisters to school, comma, or bring out of town visitors to school unless approved by the Director or his designee?"
Yeah, that's good.
Want to say that again, Ms. Darby, so we can-
Darby?
No, it's okay. I just want to make sure we get it written down.
Students may not bring non-student brothers or sisters to school or out of town visitors unless approved by the Director of Schools or his designee.
Except we just struck Director of Schools. He's not going to be in it, just the principal, right?
You can put me towards the combined of both because-
Okay, put you towards-
Then my designee will be the principal.
There you go.
But that gives me the authority to say no in the case that we have somebody that doesn't need to-
All right. That sounds good. So we can actually strike that last sentence.
And then my only other question was the procedures for speakers that are invited. Do we know where that is in case somebody wanted to view that or is there a reference here where they can find that?
It's an admin procedure.
Yeah, we've got it and I'll put that on our curriculum instruction website, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Mr. Tedwell?
I just have a question on 29 and 30. It says we'll provide a printed copy. Is that necessary if we have it online as well? Is that required by law?
Law.
It's required by law to be a printed copy.
52,000 is a paper.
Yeah.
It's going to be great.
It's a lot of paper. That'll be given out for orientation, I imagine.
Not like that, but-
It'll probably be the second week of school because we'll have to have this officially passed by the Board on August 8th and then the second week of school, we'll probably do a message home to parents to explain to them this isn't something that just arbitrarily came up with as a change in state law because I know how the public perception may get turned, so we'll probably do a message about it.
Yes, ma'am.
We can for future years. This year it's already launched. Good point.
Just making note at the bottom. Might want to add that next year.
Oh, we already have it.
Okay.
We would have done it this year. We could have delayed it.
If you could have gotten to it.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? This policy passes. Ms. Ridley?
This policy is 1.800, school calendar. It adds language for school closure for presidential primary, excuse me, election or regular November election. This is also pursuant to a change in state law.
Anyone have any questions or comments about that? Dr. Sullivan?
This also has to go before the state to approve. So they approve our school calendars as well. At any time that we're out of school for snow or anything, we have to designate it as such so that they can track the record of it.
Anyone else? Some of us are old enough to remember when they threw the school doors open, let everybody in to vote, go up and down the halls. We don't do that anymore. We don't throw that school door open anymore and it's a good thing. This is good. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? This policy passes.
Okay, next policy is 2.403, surplus property sales. It adds language for notice of surplus to be also published on a news and information website. This is pursuant to change in state law and we are happy to report that our purchasing department already does this.
That's right.
So change in state law, but also aligns with what we already do.
Questions, comments on this policy? No one?
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Sorry. Monica, I was asked to make sure that your mic is turned on, that people can hear you.
It's on.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
There you go. Can they hear you now? I hope.
I'll speak closer to it.
There you go. I think that'll do it.
Thank you.
That's better.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? Yes, ma'am?
I'm just curious, how are we disposing of things like multiple times a year or is it all done kind of at the end of a school year if we haven't used things or?
We usually do it twice. The county runs our surplus as well, so we have our own way to do it, but they have to surplus everything and it'll come before the Board to approve them and it's lots and lots of signatures. I'd much rather do them more than that, but that's all the county will do.
I'll entertain a motion. All those in favor? I didn't hear the motion. What did you say? Did you say to approve? Okay, thank you. I just didn't hear you. Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? This policy passes.
Next policy is 2.805, purchasing. This is one that was postponed from our meeting on March 18 of 2024 and it would add language regarding entering into agreements with real estate licensees.
Questions or comments on this? Ms. Darby, the last time we brought this up, you brought up something very interesting and I'm going to repeat what you said, okay? Ms. Darby said, "Doesn't that mean we would be paying them twice? Doesn't this option say a finder's fee and a real estate fee? Isn't that what this says?"
Well, I think it says finder's fee, but I think if we're going to engage in this, dealing with a brokerage, they're probably going to have a commission that we're going to have to agree to, so I would think the finder's fee would not be necessary. Because I don't know through a brokerage if you could actually work around, that would be a question for a real estate professional, Jeff might know better than I would, but since he knows real estate law.
Yeah, if you're licensed, you won't be paid a commission. You won't be paid both a finder's fee and a commission.
Yeah. So it should be- I will say, since we're talking about it, I think I personally like the idea of the second option better than the first, just because it gives us one point person and I think it might prevent us getting hit with spam potentially from people who are just trying to throw property at us, a chance that we purchase it. I think I'd rather have like a working relationship with one or maybe a select few who wanted to do more than one, but I like the idea of us using one because I think there's property out there that we're unaware of because we're not in the real estate world.
Anyone else?
Ms. Burton?
Yes?
I just want to tell, inform the Board and the policy committee that the previous policy committee, we adopted a policy about site selection process and it deals with all that. So that, if we move forward that, it will undo what we've already voted on and passed and approved a week, like the previous-
Previous.
The previous one.
Yes, we did vote in a policy, a big lengthy policy.
It was even people that are coming off the street. So I just want to be aware in the policy committee.
Mr. Tedwell?
I think we need to have more people looking at length than what we currently have. If we can incentivize them to do so, that would be great. There's not a whole lot of incentive for real estate agents to work with us and call and make this, but if we can find a way to incentivize those, that would be great. We know we need land. We know that developers are finding it way faster than we are and we're not saying that we're on opposite sides of them, but if they find it for, they find a spot that we need, then that could really cause our prices to continue to go up. So I think it would be something useful for us, especially as we have such a high need moving forward.
Anyone else? Dr. Sullivan, you have something?
Kind of here in conflict, so would that be, they would get a finder's fee and a commission then?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, one of them says that. One of this says, actually-
They both do.
They both do. Okay, wait just a minute. Sorry. Mr. Tedwell?
Yes, see, I think you'd have to strike that language, the finder's fee and the commission. It'd be one of the other.
Ms. Burton?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So if the finder's aspect, finder's fee aspect will have to be decided upon the broker and the broker will have to approve whether they will get that finder's fee and what they will be agreed upon, so in essence, it'll end up being a commission at the end of day. So regardless of how we entertain or decide to be represented by the agency of whatever brokerage, they're going to end up getting a percentage of the contract, of the purchased real estate transaction, either way, because the broker will have to approve it. A real estate agent is not just going to come in here and agree to a finder's fee. They will have to work it out, be agreed upon with a broker that they have a license to.
Who else?
Can we, is it possible to have Monica pull up the Ms. Rosales reference?
I was trying to find where it was.
The site selection. Okay.
It'd be a two something, two eight, two nine. Yeah, two eight or two nine, something.
Okay, a little bit more. Am I reading too fast?
No.
Okay. Sorry. All right. Is that it? Anyone else?
We'll make sure I'm understanding this. We're saying to use one realtor to work with. Is that one of the policies?
The top one would be lends itself more to a group or multiple, if you want, and the second option is more of like a singular real estate agent. And I think the last time I discussed this, there was discussion about doing like an RFQ and getting some requests for qualifications and I think the Board could decide. I know there were concerns because everybody knows a realtor. There was some discussion about maybe narrowing it down to like a final seven to 10 and then maybe putting them those or even five, however many the Board decided, and then putting them almost into like a random selector for that final selection so that nobody is personally involved with who was chosen to work with the school board.
Okay. All right, I'm going out on a limb here. I do not see a need for this. I do remember that conversation and I do think that's a good conversation, but that's not what this says. So you may want to circle back around and look at something that follows more what you just suggested for a policy, but it would have to, but that's not what this says. So anyone else?
Yeah, my concern is limiting ourselves, limiting ourselves, anybody.
Okay.
I think we, we purchase property, if we purchase now, it's certainly a dollar, that should be incentive enough.
That's true.
Problem is, I think if there is property, we're going to get that option of title. So I don't know if this helps us with that situation.
Anyone else?
I think the intent was-
I see there's some commission being paid somewhere. We might uncover that.
Exactly, yeah. No, they're not, they're not going to just bring us the property and be, oh, I'm doing this, spend all these dollars and not get anything. There's going to be incentives somewhere.
I see you're agreeing with your, you can deal with those things.
I mean, there's, if a realtor brings us a commission, a lease property to the seller, that the agreement by the commission usually comes to the seller. So the seller is usually one of the paid-
Exactly.
So that commission could be paid regardless of whether we have a policy on our side. So if there is a seller out there who has a realtor and wants to bring property to us today, they can do that. So, and if they do that for a realtor, the realtor says, oh, we pitched this and sell it to the quarter education and it's something that we found at a peaceful site, the commission can then be paid, but it's really typically paid the seller's side rather than the buyer's side. The buyer is not to be paid a commission.
Exactly.
Anyone else? Yes, sir? Say that again, Mr. Young.
This could actually drive up the cost of buying property.
Mr. Young, can you please speak into your mic? You talk low anyway. Yeah.
I said this could drive up the cost of buying, purchasing the property if we require this.
Mr. Tedwell?
Yeah, I think the purpose of this is we don't have somebody actively looking for off-market property. And so if we had somebody that we were working with in a relationship, yes, the, you know, increase the price because the commission is going to be paid either way from the seller's side. So, and this is the, what is the intent of it? How we modify it to make it work is one thing, but the intent is we have someone actively looking for us, for the school system, for off-market property so that we can get those properties before developers get them. I don't know what that was.
Thank you.
Third-party vendor.
It's okay.
Yep.
We just need to close the door. Thank you, Mr. Tedwell. Ms. Rosales?
Yes, Ms. Burton? There's someone back there trying to raise their hand. I don't know if they're allowed to speak or not.
No, I'm sorry. No.
No, okay.
Sorry, I can't.
That's okay.
I can't have you speak from the floor.
That's fine. Ms. Burton, I will say that at the end of day, if a real estate agent comes and brings, whether brings a contract to, brings a property, they're going to end up getting paid for that work that they've done because like Mr. Reed said, whether they're buy, even if they don't represent the seller, they don't, any real estate agent out there can bring anything to us, even if they don't own the listing. And they will still, that will be considered a buyer because it will be bringing, listing from another broker, bring it to us, present it, and they could be probably be involved and get a commission at that point.
Anyone else?
Seller.
Ms. Darby?
I just have to say like it really hasn't been working thus far, which is one of the reasons I think why we're in the position we're in. We don't have people knocking down the door trying to bring us property. I think it would be beneficial to have somebody who knows what we're looking for, how much space we need so that they can be act, there's a difference between actively looking for something and just if you happen to see something, bringing it. If we're not happy overall with the options that are here, I'm happy to circle back around at the next meeting and bring something different, but I would like some input from the Board on if you would like to see multiple agents. How many are you talking about? If we're talking about one agent, how many do you want to narrow that down to before we have like a random selector select from those top three or five or seven or, so that I can try to fashion something more to the Board's liking?
Dr. Sullivan?
If this is something the Board wants to do, I'd recommend multiple, just so we don't get accused of favoritism from our funding body, just for safety.
Ms. Burton?
Yes?
I'm just going to say it. This is going to open a door that regardless of how many we get, it's all dependent upon who's going to be the seats who's going to end up being approved for that. So I, as a Board member, do not want to be a part of selecting real estate agents because it will be dependent upon the majority.
But we need to decide on this policy. So I will entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Tedwell?
If Ms. Darby- If Ms. Darby is willing, then I'd say we can circle back around to this with a little bit more input from the board. I guess that input would have to go through Jeff Reed at this point, but you can take notes from some of the conversations we gathered today.
So.
Make a motion to postpone?
Ma'am?
Make a motion to postpone?
We can postpone. Yes, ma'am.
What I would like to do would be to have people apply. Do you get, and let Mr. Lee, our group of people go through and pick some of those or just keep them once we pick? We're not going to have a hundred people come and apply for that, just not. But the intent of this is to get more property before the board, and we need someone out there actively looking for.
So are you saying you do not want Ms. Darby to make a motion to postpone this? Okay.
We just need to say, okay, she's coming back.
You're just adding to it.
Yes, just adding to, to that contractual.
And Ms. Darby, would you impede your motion?
Sure, make a motion to postpone until the next policy.
I have a second.
Second.
I think I need a roll call vote on this.
Ms. Sharp? Ms. Rosales?
No.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Mr. Tidwell? Dr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Bratton?
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Gullian?
Yes.
Mr. Creasy?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Rigsby?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Scales?
Yes.
Mr. Hardman?
We are postponing this policy and Ms. Darby is going to redo it.
Mr. Reed, could you make a note to email the board for their input on that?
I would.
Thank you so much.
Next policy is 2.806, bids and quotations. This is just like the previous one for purchasing. A change in state law has required that the publication be on a news and information website in addition to the newspaper, which again, we already do.
Yes. Questions about this policy? Yes, sir.
I think we need, Mr. Reed, if you don't mind as well, getting with the comptroller to see whether or not this would fall the previous policy under exemptions for competitive bidding. That purchasing is going to give me issues with that.
Okay, I can take that.
Thank you. There's no issues with the way this is written. It was just, it hit me.
Okay.
I was reviewing this.
You don't want this particularly changed.
No.
You just want him to do some information.
Yep, it hit me as, because of what we dealt with last year.
Yes, I understand. Anyone else have a comment or a question on bids and quotations? Ms. Darby?
Dr. Sullivan, you and I had spoken at one point about how can we better get like local people and companies more aware when we're bidding for things? Would this be the policy where we would address that?
It would be, or we could add an additional one to 2.806-1 and make an additional one, but probably connected to this would be the best one.
Okay, so can, I'll get with you about that later. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? This policy passes.
Thank you. Next policy is 3.202, emergency preparedness plan. This is also pursuant to a change in state law and it adds language to develop a procedure for identifying the cause of fire alarm activation. So our safety director, Ms. Esir, and Sean Martin have been working with the fire marshal and local law enforcement to develop this procedure, so that's already being acted upon.
Okay. This is because of covenant, right?
Correct.
That's what I thought. Okay. Questions or comments on this policy? Now I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? This policy passes. Y'all are doing great.
All right. Next policy, next policy is 3.205, security. This is also pursuant to a change in state law and it adds language requiring principals to immediately report certain types of assaults and certain acts of vandalism to the director of schools and law enforcement.
Questions or comments on this policy? Yes, sir.
So there's, there's nothing we can do about it because it's a state law, but the way that it reads shall immediately, I feel like sets us up for potential litigation because if a principal doesn't notify us immediately, that could be reason for liability, but yet they're taking care of the emergency. And so again, there's nothing we can do about it, but it's, the wording worries me a little.
Worries you?
Yep.
But this is the state law?
It is. Yeah, nothing we can do about it, just.
Just think we have to impress it upon our principals that, you know, folks, somebody has to report this immediately. Too bad that you have to take care of the emergency. Anyone else?
Ms. Esir and I have discussed this and Dr. Sullivan as well, and so our SROs would be the first line of notification.
Okay.
And they are aware that Ms. Esir has talked about that, and so it's not a situation where a principal would have to, you know, obviously if it's a 911 thing, you call 911, but notifying your SRO would meet the requirement of calling law enforcement.
Oh, okay.
So that helps a little bit.
That does help a little bit. Anyone else? You okay with that, Larry? I'm looking at the principal to see if he's okay.
As I did, that covers the law enforcement, it doesn't cover the notifying the E portion.
Right.
But I trust our principals to do what they need to do, and if we have to deal with it, no, we'll deal with it in after time. I don't want to get stuck on the wording.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? This policy passes. Student transportation management.
Okay. 3.400, student transportation management. This is also pursuant to change in state law and also Ms. Darby has emailed some different language, but let's start with this first, the language that the TSBA suggested in their model policy. And then Ms. Darby, if that's okay with you, we can discuss your change. So this would add language requiring the board to issue certificates to bus drivers. It also adds a notice to be posted on all our buses stating that only authorized individuals may enter. And then who to contact in case of an issue on the bus.
Questions?
Ms. Bratton?
Yes, sir.
I just got one question here. I did talk to a bus driver about this and everything seemed to be okay, but on page two, number 11, when it's describing the revoke, the board shall revoke the certificate of any school bus driver found to be physically, mentally, or morally unfit. What is morally unfit? Is that like a legal question?
Let me check to see if that's the, I'm going to look up Public Acts of 2024, number 48, see if that's the wording.
Okay.
Legislative wording to me.
All right. Yeah.
Interesting.
Ms. Bratton?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So who's going to be making those determination about physically, mentally, morally fit and unfit and?
Morally unfit.
Yes, sorry. Morally unfit. Who's going to be making those decisions and determining that? And will this also mean that the certificate that they already get from the DOT, does that, which is a medical, physical approval that they get from the DOT transportation, will that be not accepted anymore and they will have to go with this whatever physical, mentally, morally unfit is?
He's looking it up to see what the exact state.
All right.
And all language says.
That'd be great.
We can.
Because there are.
Can, can we put this off to the end while he tries to locate that?
It's about 550 Public Acts from there.
Okay, there's 550 Public Acts.
Let's do it now.
While we go, while we quickly go through some of the, no. We'll just put this at the end, okay?
Well, there's some language here in the.
Perfect.
Okay.
So you can see in here, it is the duty of the local Board of Education to revoke the certificate issued to the school bus driver if the bus driver is found to be physically, mentally, or morally unfit to operate a school bus, or if the school bus driver has been, and you can see convicted in the state of some violations in 4962107 or in another jurisdiction. So that is actually from.
The law.
The law, the, the language that's in there. Now, I don't see it defined.
Ms. Brad?
Yes, sir.
Monica, so does that kind of leave us up to, it's like an objective description here? Seems like some of this is vague.
I would take this as like we dealt with other bus driver complaints that the board reviews the facts and decides whether or not they want to revoke, suspend for a year, like a similar situation we had.
Okay.
Because I don't know how we would make that.
Determination?
Yeah.
Brad?
Yes, ma'am.
So my other question is still the certificate that they have to go through, required by DOT for physical, is that still, do they still have to do that or is that overwritten, overwritten? Does that, does this language overrides them having to go to DOT and get that certificate for physical, which is good for.
No. Right. The Department of Transportation is the one that issues the CDL or whatever the license that the bus drivers need, so they would still have to meet that requirement to obtain that license.
Well, that was one of the questions I, that I got, so that's what I was asking.
Other questions?
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, Mr. Scales.
I think there has to be some type of objective standard that you measure this by. Talk about physical, mental, and moral. Morally is even subjective when you ask individual people. So there has to be something that you have objective to measure this by, in my opinion.
So the state let us kind of hang in, didn't they? Ms. Darby, did you have, don't you, didn't you have some other?
Well, I have a couple.
Something that was a little more simple?
Well, I have a couple of things. One of them is our previous policy, I don't think mentioned the mental examination, but that's been in law, I think six, since like the 60s or 70s. So my question there is, because I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Monica, but I don't think there's a definition as far as what the mental examination is either, and I believe from what Mr. Torres at the TSBA told me, is that when they get their CDL, there is like a neurological examination portion of that. So my question is, is that what we as, as the school board are going to accept as the mental evaluation? All is just weird.
We don't do anything different, so.
Okay, so.
Raise over there. We don't do anything different, do we? I don't know of anything.
That's the way we follow it. When they get their yearly examination and they go in for a DOT.
Kind of covers all that.
It covers it all.
Awesome.
And if their doctor passes them, that's what we go with.
Okay.
We're not asking for a separate, or we would, we never have.
Right.
And we take that DOT, physical, mental, as if their doctor clears them, we clear them.
I just wanted to kind of have it clear what we were, what our expectation was since it's.
No. And what we're doing seems to work quite well. And did you, didn't you have some other?
It's, it's up there in red. I spoke to Mr. Torres about it because the way the, the law reads and the way that they gave the suggested language is, is a bit confusing because the way the law reads, the board is supposed to establish those qualifications and the director enforces. And the way their suggested language was, was kind of wishy, it was a little weird. So Mr. Torres came up with that to kind of make it a little more clear cut.
In red, what's in red?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And that's a lot more clear cut.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't need to be involved in figuring out what somebody needs to do for the director of schools, I mean, or for the transportation certification. That needs to come from the board.
You just issue the certification.
Yeah, it needs to come.
It meets the qualifications that.
The board sets for.
Mr. Lee?
We have a format that we follow that it's pretty much unchanged from what we've done in the past.
And it doesn't go against the new state law.
The only thing that we, full disclosure, we've never issued a certi, a certificate. They get a letter that says you're cleared to drive, and until there's a reason to remove them, that's kind of it. But the law does require a yearly certificate, so we've polled some of our jurisdictions around us to kind of see what they're doing. They've kind of been doing what we've been doing. So we came up with like a little certificate like this.
Lovely.
That's once a year, as long as they submit their stuff back to us, we'll issue them another certificate. It's nothing fancy, but to kind of meet the law, and that would be their certificate to drive for 24, 25, and next year we just, you know, as long as things are going good and nothing's changed, we issue them another one.
Ms.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's something to say my fault if it's a CDL, and the purpose of student transportation was very good about making sure everybody had their, their physicals every.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Is that why the line is so long in the DMV? Yeah, couldn't find it out?
Ms. Bratton? Uh, yes. Okay, sorry. My understanding that this all happened because this was something that was being done by the Department of Education since the 1970s and that they went to the legislation and said that they were, they did not have the bandwidth to handle all of that and that they will prefer to move this out of their jurisdiction and put it back down to the locals because they were not in the process of hiring or firing school bus drivers, and they felt that it was in the better management and overseeing that and taken down to local school board levels. That's what my understanding. But my question to you now is that if we're going to be issuing those certificates, are we going to have procedures in place of keeping up who's got a, a certificate, who needs a certificate, what the need and all that? I mean, are we prepared to have a process to keep in track of that? Because since this is a law and we're taking, absorbing the responsibility, we have no choice, what, what is the process? Do we have that and are we going to be communicating that to the bus contractors so that they can share that with their bus drivers?
Mr. Lee?
They currently has to provide all that to us yearly and we have to submit it to the Department of Transportation. So other than issuing the certificate, which would be something different, that person who monitors their five-year fingerprints and all of that would take care of this responsibility of issuing the certificates.
So, okay, well, I guess we'll, you guys will work out the details.
Ms. Barnett is, is well aware of this law. We've met Mr. Lee and Ms. Barnett and I, we've gone over it, so she, she's aware, she's prepared.
Okay. It's just making sure that the communication is there with everyone since it's a lot of work that we're having to absorb now. The other question I have is that in the, the little sticker that we're having to put on the bus drivers, on the buses, I mean, is there a way that we can define that a little bit? Because the way it reads, it makes it seem like it's open to every parent. Every parent can now come in, but really is, is parents who have been authorized to enter the bus? So it's not like a parent can see that and say, hey, I can get in the bus and ride now. It's authorized. So I just want to see if we can make it more clear, the language around that sticker, because my understanding of the parents that will be authorized to ride the bus are those who are going to be chaperoned at a, at a school event or activity or whatever. So I would like to clarify that in the policy.
What line is?
This sticker's already on all of our buses. It was already qualified. It says, "Watch your step for the safety of our students and compliance with state law." TCA 49-6-2008, so this has been in existence since 2008. Only students and authorized staff may board, not parents, authorized staff. Now, the school may authorize, Mr. Creasy may authorize some parents to go on a field trip, they become authorized from the principal to go on the bus. They would notify the bus driver, these are the parents, or these are our staff members that would ride the bus. This is for...
Bus stop?
Bus route.
Bus route, unruly parent comes up. These stickers are actually put on, if, if somebody goes and buys a new bus, this sticker is put on the bus by the company selling the bus. We don't, now, we have a stack full of them that we had already ordered prior to this law changing, because we've been putting this on the buses for a long time. The only change to it is now there's a phone number on it. That's the only change. We've added our phone number to meet this law. So, we've just reprinted enough stickers to hand them back out, just put this sticker over the old one, and we go on about our business.
Makes sense. Mr. Tidwell?
You have a question.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I have Ms. Sharp first.
Ms. Sharp?
Um, I, okay. I suspect that, you know, we're a large district, and we've been doing a lot of this for a long time. I suspect that they codify this in law for some of the smaller districts, where their bus drivers are employees of the system.
So, that's probably the difference here.
I think we've been doing this anyway. It's just, not every system has been doing this, and they're going, they're trying to tell them.
You need to do, they need to be called. Um, we go back to the language that Ms. Darby got from Ben Force.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the first thing we need to do is vote to see if we want to change to that language.
Is that, don't y'all think that's the first thing? So, we can get that in.
Move to approve.
Are we doing, are we doing two certificates, one from the board and one from the director of schools?
No.
No. Yeah, one certificate.
Just one.
So, I don't know if this can be read, say, there are two certificates required, that the school bus drivers should receive a certificate from the board prior to operating a school bus in school districts.
Can you say "the" certificate, instead of...
I think that's what it probably should say, is issue a certificate.
Yeah.
Issue "the" certificate.
"The" certificate, and that will change it to "one" certificate. That looks like "two," but if you say the director of schools should issue "the" certificate to blah, blah, blah.
We need the first sentence then?
No.
I don't think so, because it's, it's going to be the director.
I mean, do we just need what is in red? And it should say "the"?
I, I can say "a" if that's the only certificate up there.
If that's the only certificate mentioned. So, can I have a motion to include only what is in the red?
What, delete the first sentence?
And delete the first sentence, just what's in the red.
So, moved, Ms. Breton.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? The new language passes. Now, we'll go back to the policy. Do I have a motion on the policy?
Ms. Breton?
Oh.
May I?
Yes, sir, you may.
I'm kind of out of turn.
Oh, you're fine.
Um, I'd like to, I spoke to Dr. Sullivan earlier. The director of schools has a lot that he gets hit with, or they get hit with daily. On page three...
Page three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, line three, it says, "Within 48 hours of receipt of initial complaint, the transportation supervisor shall submit a preliminary report to the director of schools and a copy of the report to the contractor. This report shall include the following." This is if there's a complaint against a driver from the public.
Okay.
Most of our policies say the designee appointed by the director of schools, with everything they've got going on. I think that within 60 days, a, a report to the director of schools, so that they have a compilation of all these, however many complaints you get, I, I think that may make it a little more streamlined for the director of schools.
I agree. So, you would like to say...
So, I think, instead of director of schools, it would say director of schools, designee.
Designee.
And he would, they would yearly designate that person. I wouldn't think it would be the director of transportation, because they're already part of the copy list. It would either have to be myself, or Dr. Martin, or someone else.
I was thinking Dr. Martin, too. That was funny.
So, let me make sure...
Designee. I'm just...
Within 48 hours of the receipt of the initial complaint, the transportation supervisor shall submit a preliminary report to the director of schools, designee, and a copy, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, ma'am.
Work.
Yes, ma'am.
That language, Madam Chair, also needs to be changed in line 11.
All right. Can we say director of schools, designee there also?
Yes.
Director of schools is saying yes, yes.
Dr. Sullivan, do you want that to say "to you and your designee"?
Yeah, "both and/or the director of schools."
On that line 11?
Yeah, that's usually the way they're written.
Yes.
Okay.
And while we're on that line, 14 says student handbook.
Mm-hmm.
I don't mean to be derogatory, but I don't think most parents completely read our student handbook. Could we not use, utilize the transportation website, or the school district's website instead of handbook? That's probably language we've had from a long...
I'd probably...
Or, or both.
I'd rather leave it, or both. I'd rather want it in both.
Would you like to add?
Yeah, we can add, student handbook and website.
And website.
The schools will have already published this.
So, our changes are in line four, report to the director of schools, and, you want "and/or" his designee, and both of those, "and/or" his designee, and again, in 11, written report to the director of schools, "and/or" designee, and number 14, "and" website.
Yep.
I want to say "and/or," unless you want the director to get all these notices that you should be using before.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Please take out "and."
Oh, yeah, because otherwise...
Madam Chair.
Otherwise, you and Kay are going to get it, okay? You don't want that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Trey, but I think we were looking at director of schools, designee on four, and then schools, and/or on line 11, so that every 60 days, you were just getting a final report?
That's good.
I don't know if that's a preference, or, or if you don't want to see them at all.
You don't want to say it.
I want to see the final.
Add the word "and" back to...
Number 11.
Number 11.
While we're in this, um, Trey, do we have, I don't know this, because I've never had to deal with this, but when you guys get a complaint about a driver, do we respond back to whoever has issued that complaint, that it has been resolved at some point?
In the past, we have not done a very good job of that. Last year, we initiated our complaint department. We actually have a person now. We have a database, which we did not have before. We do have a database now, so within three days, whatever we set up, for them to respond back to that person, and/or i, i, if a parent calls in, or a principal calls in, we now have a complaint tracking department, and after three days, if there has not been a follow-up, the director of transportation gets an email notifying her. So, there is now a process in place, but we did not have one prior to last year.
Ms. Breton?
Yes, sir.
Trey, are you talking about issue track?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So, we have some new language in number four, in line number four, line number 11, and line number 14. May I quickly have a motion to change that language? Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? We have changed the language. Now, are there any other questions and concerns on this? Mr. Young?
Did we get a directive on that? Are we going to have something to measure?
Thank you.
What did you say?
Morally unfit, did we ever come to a decision on that?
We were going to make it to the end, right? That's what's in state law.
The state should provide us with some way to measure, how we can...
I wouldn't want to make up a definition.
I would not want, I would not want to make that call.
The statute is what it is, it requires all the... So, we're going to just keep doing business as is. We're not changing anything.
Not really.
Okay.
Other than the certificate.
Good with that.
And a little bit on designee.
Is it possible, maybe, to, Trey, get like a checklist of what's required to receive that certificate, so the board could officially, like, adopt that that's what we're requiring for that certificate?
Yes. And ask the moral part, unless a driver really does something out there that's easy, the director of schools takes, I'm talking about the, the easy, the ones that are no contest, you know, they, you know, have a, whatever the case may be. There's only been one instance since I've been over transportation that we have suspended a driver, and I wouldn't consider it, moral may not be the right term, but it came before you all took with, and we presented all the information, and you all made the decision on whether to terminate that driver or not. So, when it gets to that area, our, I, I'm not making that call. We're going to gather all the data, and we're going to come before the board for y'all to make that decision. And that's what we've done in the past, and I do not see that changing, as long as Dr. Sullivan and I are kind of doing this. If, if there's any doubt at all, it's coming to y'all.
Agreed.
Well, that makes sense.
First and second thought.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion now? Thank you, do I, thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Student transportation management policy is now passed with changes.
All right. One page down, three to go. All right. Next policy is 4.201, class size ratios. This is also pursuant to a change in state law, which adds language to modify class size requirements for CTE classes for grades six through eight. So, this gives us a little bit more flexibility in those middle school grades.
And for those of you that are not in the classroom, and don't realize, this is great for us in middle school, because CTE has had 20 in a class forever, as long as I've been involved in education. This will let you have five more. Well, if you have four CTE classes in middle school, and you can add five, then you've got another class. You're able to add more children and get another class. So, this is a good thing to help out middle schools with CTE. Questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to her first.
Thank, thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Class size ratio passes.
Next policy is 4.301, interscholastic athletics. This is also pursuant to a change in state law, which adds that homeschool student participation shall be permitted to participate in accordance with TWSAA or TMSAA guidelines. If a school's not a member with these organizations, homeschool students that are zoned for the school shall be permitted to participate in interscholastic athletics to the same extent as other students.
Questions or comments? Dr. Sullivan?
So, this is something, two years ago, we started allowing, was if a homeschool student wanted to participate at a different school, and Ms. Darby, we've talked about several of these, um, they wanted to go to a different school, the school receiving principal, the sending principal, the county athletic director, myself, and there was one other person I had to sign off, that's no longer an option for us with TWSAA rule change. It has to be their zoned school, so they can't attend, and that's not a law, it's just TWSAA changed their eligibility.
Okay.
So, if they're currently there, they're fine, but anybody do.
Yes, Mr. Harman? That's a good question.
I'm not as familiar with TWSAA rule on charter schools. Um, I'm sure it would follow the same eligibility requirements, and so, I know, we've had several reach out from out of district, from out of our county, that wanted for us to pilot, or to co-op with them, and we've said no, because we don't have any jurisdiction. It was Davidson County. We don't have any jurisdiction over Davidson County students, and so, we said no. They should have to follow the exact same eligibility. Our schools that are opening, I don't believe are starting with any TMSAA, because they don't have any high schools yet, any TMSAA schools. But that's, that's a great point. We're going to have to address that.
It's a great question. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Interscholastic athletics passes.
Next policy is 4.600, grading systems. This is, um, there are two changes. The first is pursuant to a change in state law, which takes dual enrollment courses from 4 percentage points to 5 percentage points. And then, the second change, updates language for middle school students taking high school courses.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to her first.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? The new grading system policy will be in effect.
Thank you. Next policy is 4.602, grade point average. This is also pursuant to a change in state law regarding the same dual enrollment, goes from 4% to 5%. And then, there's some other updates from, excuse me, from middle school students also taking high school courses, so similar to the previous one.
Yes? But this, what I'm reading here, middle school students taking high school students taking high school students taking high school students... Courses will have their grades recorded on the high school transcript with the earned letter grade and corresponding grades. You point out not, would this speak to what she spoke with this evening? No pass fail, a real, a grade?
Correct.
But it, okay, this is for next year, right?
Correct.
It's not for this past year. Okay. Oh, I know that, I'm just saying, this is what she was asking to talk about.
That is what she was asking.
Yeah, I understand. It is. Going forward. Other questions? Okay.
Page two, line 14 and 15. So, this is something that, um, we will talk with high school principals about as well. Most of them do exactly the same thing, but we have a couple outliers, and we want it in policy, so that when we hold out at Torrens and Saluditorians, that it is in policy, that it's not a, some of you do seven, into seventh semester, some of you do April, so you kind of have an idea of what it's going to be, this puts it in policy, that it's by April 15.
Oh. Okay, with that, Mr. Creasy? Okay.
He was following it. He was doing it as needed.
All right. He, he likes it, okay. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Policy passes.
Okay, next policy is 4.603, promotion and retention. This is also pursuant to changes in state law. It adds a section on voluntary retention for parents of grades kindergarten through second grade with certain conditions. It also adds language for a new pathway to the fifth grade. And then adds some language about defining a high school cohort and what that looks like with promotions and retentions.
Questions about this? Dr. Sullivan?
I just wanna call out that it only qualifies for K through two, and I think it's very important that the legislature did not see any need to go past K through two so that schools still have say so on what happens after second grade.
Yes.
Yes. The principal actually is.
Yes.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Policy passes.
Next policy is 4.6041, testing for credit. This one adds French one to the list of classes that you can test for credit.
Questions on testing for credit? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Policy passes. Graduation requirements.
4.605, graduation requirements. It removes language for homebound students to another policy and then adds IB mathematics, excuse me, IB mathematics for allowable course substitutions. So that language is not being deleted, it's just being moved to another policy, and you'll see that in the next few minutes.
Ms. Bratton?
Yes, ma'am.
So this was a state law?
This was not pursuant to a change in state law, but pursuant to a change by the Department of Education.
Okay, so what does this means now? Since we're removing this language for homebound students?
It's in another policy.
Very next policy.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, that, we're just striking that and it goes to another policy.
Okay, and put it in another policy.
Right.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
My apologies.
Anyone have any questions or comments on this? I'll entertain a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Policy passes. Here's where it is, Ms. Rosales, in the next policy.
Thank you, sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, policy 4.606, which is graduation activities. That language that was stricken from 4.605 is getting moved here. And that's the only change to this one.
Are there questions about this? I believe this means if we have a homebound student and they meet all the requirements, they can march. That's what it means. Questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Graduation activities passes. I'm doing well.
Policy 5.115, assignment and transfer. This one changes notification of transfer of employees.
Questions or comments?
I've got, the reason that we took out, or proposed taking out with a reason is then that opens you up to some legality. So when we tell people that we're either non-renewing or transfers, we always say for the efficient operation of the district, or I'm not giving you an answer because contracts are year to year. And so that practice goes against the way we have it in policy. It's not a requirement in state law.
Well, we need to strike that because it, we don't-
I'm sorry, could you say that again, Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah, so when we are non-renewing someone, we always say that either for the efficient operation of the school, or we don't give a reason. And that is what they tell all administrators from the very beginning of when you're non-renewing someone so that there is no claim for why you not renewed them because you're a year to year employee.
So when we're transferring though, and not non-renewing, why wouldn't we?
Because we could be, sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine, I was just asking because hearing from some teachers, not understanding why they're being transferred, I think is difficult because they, they're unsure of where they might need to improve, or if you're transferring them because their talents are needed at this school and not this one.
We don't transfer anyone from school to school unless it's a move from one needing a position at another school to another one. So let's say that Blackman Elementary loses students to charter school this year, and we have an opening that where we need, what I'm thinking off the top of my head is plain, you may need an additional teacher. We would go ahead and tell that teacher, that's the reason you're moving. We're just not putting it in writing. Or we may have another reason that we don't want to put in writing. For example, we have two employees who have had an issue with each other, and we need them to be separated. I don't wanna put that reason in writing.
But that goes in their record that's not public, correct?
Any record can be open for public inspection.
I don't know, it just doesn't seem very transparent to me to not be letting someone know why they're being moved. I mean, we received an email about it today, some of us did, so I don't know. I, I get the non-renew part as far as that goes, so I think I would be comfortable if we maybe put those in two separate sentences personally, but-
No. Please do not do that. Please take out with reason.
Well, I won't, but-
That's fine. It's your vote, Ms. Darby.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else have a question? I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We will have a roll call vote.
Ms. Sharp? Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
No.
Mr. Tidwell?
No.
Dr. Sullivan? Ms. Bratton?
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Dr. Martin? Dr. Gullian?
Yes.
Mr. Creasy? Ms. Taylor? Ms. Riggsby? Ms. Carr? Mr. Scales? And Mr. Hardman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Background investigations.
Okay, next policy is 5.118, background investigations. This was requested by the HR department. Obviously, we, we don't hire people who are listed on the state or any other state sex offender registry. However, we did not have that in policy. So just to make sure that the policy meets what we are doing, we are asking to add this language in there.
Questions or comments on this? Yes, Mr. Hardman?
On page two, number, start with number, line 11.
Yes.
Do we need to put a link on when they will be destroyed? After seven years or five years, whatever?
Standing law?
Yes.
Does it need to go into policy?
It doesn't need to, but I don't think there's any harm in, in it.
What is the law? Do you know?
Seven years.
Seven years.
Is that a state law?
I believe it is under records retention, yes.
Mr. Hardman, would you like to add that?
Yes, I would.
Okay, how would you like it to read, sir?
Get ready to pass out first.
That's perfectly all right.
It was simple, then, is after seven years, you can see if your eye is held or not, you should destroy the government's strength. Or the best, that is, when you're in the position to do.
Okay, so just add, compensation applies after seven. At the decision.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Now let's go back to the entire policy. Do we have any more questions or comments on the entire policy? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Background investigations passes with the new language. Physical assault leave.
5.307, physical assault leave. It adds language to expand leave from teachers to any employee as a result of physical assault resulting from their employment duties pursuant to a change in state law. So prior to the change, this only applied to certified teachers. Now it applies to all employees.
All employees. With certified and classified. It also changes how they're paid, am I correct? The board will pay the difference between workman's comp. Have we always done that? I know we haven't, that's why I'm asking. In line 15.
Yes, that's just, I think that just takes that language in seven and eight and nine and moves it down to-
Hourly employees.
Hourly employees also. I guess my question is-
This used to just be for teachers. It's striking it there and adding it for everybody.
And in workman's comp, it's not your full salary.
Correct.
So that's why we were making up the difference, right?
Yes.
That's the part I wanna make sure I understand. Okay, anyone else?
This is really good.
I think it is too.
A lot of these EAs are right there in the trenches as well.
More so sometimes.
Yeah.
Because they're the ones, one on one, perhaps with a child in a structured setting. You would know that, wouldn't you, Ms. Maxwell?
Yes, I would.
Anyone else?
It does come with an additional cost. So, I mean, it's a change in state law, it's nothing, but it's an addition because you're paying for the sub and that, so.
Yes.
This was a state law change, it did not come with any extra funding.
Of course not. All right, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Physical assault leave passes. Substitute teachers.
5.701, substitute teachers. This is pursuant to a change in state law and adds annual school safety training for substitute teachers, which we have already done that. But here it is again.
And we refer to this as the Frances Rosales law.
That's right.
For those of you that don't know, she brought this forward, and our board put forth a resolution for this, and it went all the way into law. So we're kinda proud of this one.
Ms. Bratton? I will be picking up law signed by the governor when I, when we, when I return back.
You should have it framed.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Questions, comments? Ms. Rosales, would you like to make a motion?
Of course, move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Policy passes.
Okay, next policy, 5.802, qualifications and duties of the director of schools. This is pursuant to a change in state law and adds language requiring the director of schools to report if an educator has pled guilty, no low, or has been convicted or otherwise found guilty of certain offenses in other jurisdictions.
Questions or comments? This is state law, right?
Correct.
New state law, okay. Questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes. Attendance.
Policy 6.200, attendance. This is not pursuant to change in state law, but is some tweaks from our district. So one change is to update absences for classes on a four by four or modified block schedule. And then the other change is for acceptance of excused absence notes. And that is to, to go from school to district for students that move, and this would help with truancy.
Dr. Sullivan, you have anything?
Only thing I would add for the modified block, since they're basically condensing into one year. If they miss four, they're really missing eight. So when we quoted this, at some of our schools last year, you had kids who were missing eight, so almost a quarter of the year, but they were still exempt from exams.
Right. Are all of our high schools gonna be on blocks?
No.
Questions? Concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Motion passes.
Next policy is 6.2011, voluntary pre-K attendance. This might be the easiest one of the night. Just updates the district contact to Ms. Ann Haley, the elementary coordinator.
Any questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second? Is that a second, Mr. Creasy? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Voluntary pre-K attendance policy passes. School admissions.
Thank you. Policy 6.203, school admissions. This is pursuant to change in state law and adds language to the policy allowing principals to request information regarding certain delinquent offenses of a student that is coming into the district.
Questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Ms. Bratton?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I understand this is the power of attorney. Okay. Okay, never mind, I think my, okay. It just read weird to me for a second.
You got it?
Huh?
You got it. You know, when we do the voting and stuff, and it always says if it's in the state custody, then we have to-
Yes, and, and that's fine, but I was, it, it just made it seem like it was the power of attorney to give. It just read weird. Because I've been in, because I, I didn't have a power of attorney that gave me, my daughter, put in my care. It was just a court order. So it just sounded, so it just read weird when it said the district of the power of attorney and made it seem like it was just limiting to the care, a child that's not biological put in the care by the, that is approved by the power of attorney.
This is state, okay.
That's, it just read weird.
Got you.
And we already obviously do this, but it was not in our policy for some reason. So when the TSBA sent out their model policy, we needed to add that section in there.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Policy passes. Code of conduct.
6.300, code of conduct. There are some changes in state law that requires law enforcement and the director of schools to be immediately notified of an assault on school property. It also adds a separate category of an assault of an LEA employee under a level four disciplinary category.
This is any employee.
Correct.
Okay, certified, classified, it doesn't matter, it's an employee.
Yes, ma'am.
Just like our other ones.
Correct.
Questions? Yes, sir?
I think it's interesting, so that assault against an employee, that part that's highlighted on page five, lines 32 to 34, talks about shall be suspended at all school-sponsored events. So this deals with more than just school.
Yes.
With multiple unless modified by the director.
Yes. You have been- You have been suspended, you are not going to the football game.
Ms. Brighton?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that the result of this, why it happened, incident that happened in a different district where there were no consequences for the child. And that's why now this law was presented to... So there'd be consequences for the child that is involved in the incident.
I appreciate your clarification. Haven't we always?
Yeah.
We have. Lots of the things the state, all of a sudden are thinking of good ideas we've been doing. No, I don't think so.
No, it was not our district.
Anyone else?
Not our district.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Code of Conduct passes.
Okay. Next policy is 6.308, bus safety and conduct. And this one was on the list for discussion.
Questions or comments? Mr. Tidwell?
I didn't add this one for discussion, but I did see some things I want to look at. The data storage, and I'm trying to remember where I saw that at, which line it is, but it says... I think it's on the second page. These materials shall be maintained for a minimum of three days. Three days seems like a very short time. Are we limited on space? Can we not extend that? Maybe like five business days?
The problem with that is it depends on the size of the DVR that's attached to the bus cameras. So if there's a lot of activity on the bus, it will re-record after a certain amount of storage is met. So we can't guarantee that it would be five days or anything like that.
We changed to a system that would download to the cloud once the bus arrived. So we're... Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm a trade run, but of course he disappeared. But as I understood it, I thought we changed to a system, or we're piloting a system maybe, that we are recording the entire, you know, bus ride with the three separate cameras. And then when we come to the school, it connects to their Wi-Fi and downloads the video to the clouds that we have that stored. Would that not then free up the storage to the bus before we continue to add?
I think it would depend on what that bus driver decided to do. If it was an incident that was so unruly, they decided to quit and not drive their bus anymore, there... It could very well be gone for three days every time they turn their bus on and it started to move again.
So it don't automatically connect to the Wi-Fi, or...
It will, but if, let's say it happened at the end of a route and the bus driver says, "I'm done, I quit", and never comes back to us, they're never going to hit our school server again. Hopefully they would. I'm just thinking hypothetically because they're going to want the event recorded, you would hope.
Yeah. Well, in that scenario, I mean, we're still asking for three days, so if they quit, we're still in trouble.
Agreed.
It's five. I just think, you know, if I have an incident with... My kids walk, they don't... But if I had an incident on the bus or something like that, I could see my kid...
Yeah.
Maybe the first two or three days, he's not telling me what happened, like see a change in behavior. And by the fourth, fifth day, he's like, "Hey, this happened on this day." And then I'm going to be coming up to the school, if I'm a parent, being like, "Hey, show me the footage. My kid was whatever, you know?"
I would want to see what the capabilities of DVR are because I sure don't want to get into where we're going back and installing more video. I think our bus drivers had fun with that.
Sure. Can we look into that?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yes, ma'am. This is not on here, but back in early May, I rode a lot of buses, morning and afternoon. And I think we need to revisit the conduct of the children on the buses. I was really shocked that the elementary students were the worst ones, the worst behaved. And actually, the high school students were the best behaved. But they're damaging a lot of the buses. And we, as a system, should not be incurring that cost. And the parents should be paying for that. And I also had a lot of complaints from this particular bus driver who had several Sharpie artworks on several seats that the principal or the administration was not forthcoming with who the student was. So they could not identify who the student was. To contact the parents to pay for that. And it's very, very costly for these seats. And I know that Mr. Lee, he's already gone, but we shouldn't be incurring that cost and we should pass it on to the parents. And if the parents cannot behave... Excuse me, if the children cannot behave on the bus, then the parents need to drop them off. For busing. So...
Anyone else?
I love that idea in theory, but I'm still held accountable, and so is our district for their attendance. So until they get rid of the attendance law, that's what we tried to get them to work on. I agree 100% in theory, especially...
They need some backup from the admin at the schools then. Needs to be reiterated, they need to help.
I'll say one of the things we struggle with on the north end is that the kids may have a discipline report and then they move out of district. And so we struggle with that a lot when the end of the month unfortunately hits and then they no longer have that same place to stay. We don't have a way to recoup that because we have no jurisdiction or sometimes any idea where they go to.
They're moving from place to place.
Yeah. They may come back.
Start saying they've gone back to Antioch and then they...
They may come back. Yeah.
It is.
It is.
There was multiple stab... Stabs in the seat. There were lots of artwork with a Sharpie on just one bus. And this one particular school, the kids don't ride the bus but about 30 minutes of that. 30 minutes of that.
Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah, lines 21 and 22 are something that I would love to start holding our students and parents accountable to, but I know that there will be a ton of backlash. And so if that's something that the board is willing, I would love for us to discuss. We have kids every day whose parents will all of a sudden text them and say, "I want them to ride home with somebody else". They show a text to the parent. And we allow them because their parent approved them. But it puts a huge burden on our bus drivers and it puts us in a huge liability issue because we're approving kids that...
And we don't know that that's really their parent, it's...
100% agree. But that is... We talked about going ahead and implementing this.
We did that with the phone back in our day.
Yeah.
Somebody called and said, "Let them go home."
No, we are. Right now, we allow them to do it. But I know that the board, if I... If I start holding the line on that, the board is going to get worn out with phone calls about mad parents whose kid didn't go home with what they wanted. So just something for further discussion that we need to truly look at and see how far we want to go because I'm perfectly fine doing that.
Ms. Brighton?
They're supposed to. But yes, but very well... Yep.
Supposed to.
Supposed to. Supposed to. Yep. I said I can start holding the line, but we're going to have some mad parents.
But this gives you a toe-the-line state policy. And there are going to be some mad people.
Very mad parents, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. I've heard... I've rode buses as well. And I've heard from some bus contractors and bus drivers about the whole issues that are currently happening with behavior. And I know that the principal... And I've even talked to principals as well in when they're dealing with matters and situations. And sometimes they're caught in a situation where it's hard to... It's hard to say, "Okay, this child did it." So if the board wants to continue further discussion and bring back some other ideas of what we can potentially look into as far as changing these policies, I think it's hard to make decisions right now because I don't know honestly what the impacts will be if the changes are. So if we can have a discussion of this that's bigger than tonight and bring in with options and ideas, I think it behooves us to do that as a board because it has been a common issue that's been heard. And I don't know what the solutions are today, but if we can come back to it, I would love to have a bigger conversation.
Would you like to make a motion to postpone this policy?
And to bring it back to the next policy committee, or we can have...
Okay, so you're sending the next policy meeting, that's what you have to postpone.
Yes.
We want it to be...
I would like to make a motion to postpone this policy and bring it back in the next committee.
Mr. Tidwell, I'm sorry, he had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I was just going to ask, if we do that, then none of this will be implemented this year? Or when we do it at the policy committee, it could still be implemented?
No, she just postponed it to the next.
There are no potential changes on this one. This was just for discussion.
Okay. I do want to add one other thing on there. And that goes back to a lot of the conversations that I've had over the past year and a half with bus contractors is that there's a discipline issue that happens and they report it to the principal and then nothing is done. And there's a communication breakdown. So we... That's why I asked earlier about issue track, that's this new thing I think we're piloting. I would like to add that into our policy. There's... I'm just going to read real quick and some of the... There's some typos here, but I just copied it off what was sent. But this is kind of the way it works. Bus conduct is the online portal for bus discipline report. The following steps take place. Step one, conduct report... A conduct report is submitted to the school electronically. Step two, school will address the report within two days. Step three, if the report has not been addressed, they receive a reminder. Step four, if more than two reminders, then the department of transportation intervenes with a... They got Y here. Step five, after discipline is determined, a parent letter will be sent to the parent. Step six, driver receives notification of discipline action, which I think is a huge one that has been missing, and completion of conduct report. Step seven, transportation receives and follows all of the above reports. So if we're using that system, I think it'd be great to have that in policy because the most common complaint that I hear from bus contractors is, "I had an issue with the student. I told the AP, I told the principal, there was no follow-up. Student's back on the bus today, I've not seen anything the rest of the week, and I'm not going to keep driving with these unruly students." So if we can address that, that would be great. But I would... That's my question, my follow-up to the postpone was, not that I'm against postponing, but if it's implemented into the policy at the next policy committee, it will be moving forward or it will be the following year? Because I'd like to see this added now.
You'll have a... You should have a policy meeting in the fall, so...
So it'll be implemented then?
October should be, yeah. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Would you repeat your motion, please, ma'am?
My motion is to... My motion is to postpone this until the following policy committee. And we can... Everyone... You can bring your suggestion and any other board member can bring their suggestions and we can have a bigger discussion about this. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments on that? Yes, sir?
I think the one thing, I agree. And I think that transportation would love to have that implemented district-wide. Where I would be cautious is that then bus drivers may start questioning the discipline that was handed down and in state law, principals have that authority. And so...
We can write that in there. The biggest complaint I had is not that there was no discipline.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was not... There's no communication of what the discipline was. So it may have been handled inside the school.
Guilty of that, must it?
But they didn't... They weren't communicated, so the bus drivers left with no information.
But that could be added.
Yes. No, I'm totally good with that.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to postpone bus safety and conduct until your fall, October policy meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? We will postpone bus safety and conduct for further discussion and ideas from the board and other people, I'm sure, to help us with bus safety and conduct.
Okay. Next policy is 6.309, zero tolerance offenses. This is pursuant to a change in state law that would add... Add language that a valid threat of mass violence shall be determined by a threat assessment team. So just to give you all a little background, last year, the legislature added threats of mass violence as a zero tolerance offense. I think there were some unintended consequences and they have now changed the law to say that a threat assessment has to be done before a student is zero-tolerenced for threats of mass violence. If that threat assessment has to come back as a valid.
So this is...
That's the change.
This is a team appointed by the principal at each school?
Yeah, but we've designated who can and can't be from the central office.
Okay, so you've already sort of...
We're doing this, we just weren't. We were not using the threat assessment as part of discipline because that... But it's a change in state law. What I will do, since I'm technically a principal myself, can't zero-tolerence a student until there's threat assessment, we will suspend pending further investigation and outcome of the threat assessment. That'll be wording you hear over and over again.
But that would be only for the offense of threat of mass violence.
Of the threat of mass...
Right. We still do threat assessments.
Valid.
But for the other discipline offenses, we can't use the results of that to discipline only for the threats of mass violence.
Okay. Okay.
Mass violence defined as two or more threatening...
Two or more.
Mm-hmm. Two or more what?
Individuals threatened.
Oh, oh, oh.
That results in serious injury or death.
Okay. Okay.
Could result in serious injury.
So that's how you get a mass? Two or more... Two or more people will be injured in this?
Anybody other than one.
Okay. So if you're just going to beat up your, you know, best friend, that's not so much. Okay. Is there anything else on this, Monica?
No, that's the only change.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Zero tolerance offense passes.
Okay. Next policy is 6.316, suspension, expulsion, and remand. And this is very similar to the one that we did, which states that students can be suspended for an invalid threat of mass violence. So again, if the threat assessment comes back as invalid, that student can still be suspended, just can't be zero-tolerenced because there was a disruption that was made, something inappropriate was said. Our admins still can discipline for that. It's just not a valid threat of mass violence. So that student can still be suspended.
If a student makes a...
Yes. Suspension.
Makes... Makes a threat.
I think it's just suspension.
And then says, "Oh, whoops, I was kidding." You can still... They can still be suspended.
Yeah, yes. Valid are tough, but...
It's the first time a school rules something's invalid and then something tragic happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's an issue.
Yeah. And then at the very end, again, school-sponsored events, which we already put in one policy, but we're going to put in this one too.
And this one explains it a little more, maybe defines what a school-sponsored event is.
Yeah. Answers, football games, doesn't matter.
Sure.
Band concerts, whatever. Okay. Questions?
I want to go back to code of conduct because I feel like this and code of conduct are going against each other.
Uh-oh.
Because the way this is, 6.316, it looks like all you can do is do in-school suspension for an invalid threat of mass violence. And I feel like under code of conduct, it's listed under Level 4, which would be expulsion, suspension, and remandment.
Zero tolerance? This one?
No.
Okay.
I think we looked at code of conduct, 6.300, 34, October. Sorry, Mr. Creasy said that a second ago, I was like, something?
Something's not right. Code of Conduct is 0.300.
Well, threat of mass violence is still a Level 5. It's a zero tolerance, but it has to be a valid. So that didn't change. This is just if the threats of mass violence are not valid.
So I'm looking on page 5, under code of conduct. If a student's action poses a threat to the safety of others in the school, even if it was invalid, it still could pose a threat. So under this, it would look like a principal or director of schools could still expel or remand. But for some reason, it's not listed under suspension or expulsion, it's only listed under in-school suspension.
Hey, are you talking about 6.1?
I went back between two different policies. 6.300, code of conduct, page 5, lines 10 through 12.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
Dr. Sullivan, are you talking on 6.316?
Yes.
Line says reasons for suspension, expulsion, and line 13 says invalid threat.
I'm on the wrong line. I'm backwards. Never mind. We're good. Excuse me. Sorry.
Wonder we were.
I was going on page two, then going back to page one.
A little confused.
I was confused too. I was just, sorry. You got, thank you, Ms. Darby. I was terrified we were going to have a bunch, a whole bunch of kids making threats with one day of ISS. That was not going to go over well.
No, no. Okay. So we are on policy 6.316. At the present time, are there questions besides you, Dr. Sullivan?
Good.
Or concerns on this policy? I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to approve.
Put that down. Does Dr. Sullivan move to approve that? Ms. Rosales, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Suspension, expulsion, and remand policy is passed. Now we're going to suspend and expel. Dr. Sullivan, say what this one says.
Okay, 6.318, admission of suspended or expelled students. This is very similar to that other policy we discussed a little bit back, that the principal may ask the parent or guardian in writing if their student has been adjudicated delinquent for certain offenses. And there's a big, long list, but they're listed in that TCA code. It's mostly violent, violent sexual acts, things like that. So now when we bring that forward to the board for the out-of-county, the principals can ask that, and we can ask that, and then that's something that the board can consider.
In approval or denied?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Questions on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Admission of suspended or expelled students passes. Reporting child abuse.
Policy 6.409, reporting child abuse. This is pursuant to a change in state law and adds the requirement that their director of schools submit the name of the child abuse coordinator and an alternate for each school to the Department of Children's Services. And again, we already have those people designated. This just puts in policy the requirement that that report or that list of people is reported to the Department of Children's Services.
We always reported child abuse. When I first read this, I thought, I don't understand this, but it's who you report it to and the, and the chain of command on them.
The list, yes.
Okay, with the name.
Correct.
I've got it. Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Darby, did you have a question?
Oh, okay. I was scratching my nose.
It's, you know, okay, yeah. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Anyone abstaining? Policy passes.
Next policy is 6.415, student suicide prevention. This updates language for clarity and consistency, so this is not a change in state law. And Ms. Darby had a question about the, on line 15, it says shall follow the Rutherford County Mental Health Procedure. So Ms. Darby, I have reached out to our staff. Let me see her. It includes things like safety plan, discharge paper, a note from mental health therapist. Seems like maybe she's emailed me. Hang on just a second.
If it would be, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If it would be permissible, I'm good to approve the changes with the principal wording and bring this back around again at the next policy meeting if necessary, once we get that information, rather than holding up tonight's meeting if you want. There's a whole section in the TSBA policy that's missing from ours, and I think it's probably because we have referenced this Rutherford County Mental Health Procedure.
It's this document right here. It's our, RCS Student Support Mental Health Crisis Procedures. So this appears like a little handbook.
Is that, ma'am?
No, I haven't seen, that's why I had asked Ms. Ridley what it was that it was referencing, so I have not had a chance to look that over. But I was going to compare it to what was missing from the suggested policy from TSBA.
Before I got in this role, for sure. Because it's part, we have to have it, suicide prevention as part of state law, and I'm, I'm not against that. I'm sure ours is probably more thorough than what TSBA has.
There are parts of it that might be, well, I'll tell you, for example, line 24 through 27 on this policy, where if it's state law, can we be in some sticky situation with parents during the period of activity, needing support for suicidal offenses, that's just how they act to be at the class. We can't make that judgment, but.
We get in some sticky situations with parents during that.
This is not something new because it still has the old logo on it.
Yes, sir.
Monica, do you mind sending that to the board? That'd be okay. Just for review.
Is this something that has to be done tonight? Or do we want?
Let me see how it's currently written.
Let's see.
Until we make a decision, what's currently written is what we'll follow.
Okay. I think what's currently written is what's here, except we're changing it from the director of schools to the principal, which makes sense.
Yeah, but we shall ensure this in this place. Okay.
Yeah. I think, yeah.
I don't think any of it was state law that we were changing, was it, Ms. Ridley?
No, this is not pursuant to change in state.
That's why I said if, if you want to go ahead with the principal changes so that that's in place for the start of the school year, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to see what all was in this, that it's being referenced in the policy before I.
Pretty thorough.
Yeah.
And if this is, and I know that it's been a while, a while, around a while, so now that you see that, you feel better, Ms.?
I'm sorry?
Now that you see what we give and what the procedure is, do you feel better about that?
I would just like to read it personally. I'd like to have a minute to go through it since it wasn't included in the.
So what is your suggestion, Ms. Darby?
I was suggesting to move forward with the principal wording changes. We, we can move forward with the whole thing, honestly. If, if I have an issue with it, I can always bring it up at the next policy meeting.
Okay.
Ms. Breton?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, for the board and for the policy committee people to be aware of, there was an incident that happened, again, outside of Rutherford County, not in this county, where, actually, it was in another state, where there was a child who was under crisis, and because there was not adult supervision for when that occurred, the child, unfortunately, something happened at the school, and then the, and then that brought the parents with the schools in a lawsuit because of their not having something in this policy that says, ensure the student be placed under adult supervision. So I, I am, and you can even Google this on Google about it, but this, and it is an unfortunate situation that happened where that, and it was not, ended up not in a good thing. So I just, I like the fact that it says, ensure the student is placed under adult supervision and that we follow some type of procedure. Because I feel like that kind of covers the, covers us.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a second? Ms. Darby?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Student suicide prevention passes. And if there's something you want to come back and add?
Yeah, I'll come back next time. If, if it's, it may not be necessary. I just.
May not. Once you see that, you may, you may be fine. All right.
Okay.
Title nine and sexual harassment.
Title nine, policy 6.3041, excuse me, title nine and sexual harassment. This was postponed from the meeting on March 18th, 2024. I think we discussed this one in great detail, but just to give you all an update, the new rules were supposed to take effect August 1st. As all of you probably already know, the state and some other states have sued to block the implementation of the new rules. So right now, those are not going into effect, and we are still operating under the 2020 rules.
Okay. But this is, this was postponed?
Yes.
And so we're bringing it back to take a look at?
Correct.
The 90 days. All right, questions or concerns?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'm just going to, for the record, note again that I am, and I think this, I think the timely investigation, I'm not sure if that's new, this go-around, or if it's from the last time, but I feel like it's a step backwards. Usually, policies will start off with something subjective like that, like a timely, timely to one person is 48 hours, timely to another is two weeks. And we had already stated 48 hours. So I feel like changing it back to timely is kind of taking a step backwards. And I think it also, and Mr. Reed, you can speak to this, but I would think that opens us up for possible litigation because if, for some reason, timely to somebody means two weeks, and then somebody else in a courtroom decides it's not, I'm more comfortable with us having a timeframe locked in. I'm also not agreement in the 90 days. I won't go into detail. You all have heard me talk about it many times before. But I do just want to note it for the record. I, I think, especially when we've only had, last time she was here, our coordinator told us we had one investigation. That was in April, so the school year was almost to a close. It doesn't seem like that's necessary, and I feel like it's putting us at more risk.
Other comments?
Yes.
Concerns? Mr. Scales?
Yeah, my wife actually does this for a living, and they get, one of my two. My wife actually does this for a living, and they actually, 120 days. Now the, so the 90 days is less than that. Now, I don't know about the timely manner there. I don't remember that being there before. But in terms of the length, it's up to. So it may not take that long to do a thorough investigation. She said that sometimes it does take that long. But you do accommodations in between there. Say someone's not safe, or something happened, and you make accommodations along the way.
Your wife works in an educational setting also. Is that correct? That's what I thought. Anyone else?
The timely investigation, that's what the committee changed last time we were here. As y'all remember, we had a lot of discussion over this, and that was the new language that we put in, and then we postponed the, the policy. So this is where we left off last time we were here.
We've already voted on the timely.
Yes, this is what we added.
This was new language we voted on last?
Correct.
I, but I couldn't remember that either.
I don't think we voted on the timely though, because it was postponed, correct?
Yeah, nothing went into effect yet.
Okay. We discussed that.
We changed this language.
Okay.
To the policy.
Okay. But, but the policy's not in it?
No.
Okay.
No. But this is the last, last reiteration at our, at our last policy committee.
Policy team made that changes of a timely manner? Is that what we're referring to?
We all did. Mm-hmm, yes.
Other questions or concerns?
Ms. Breton?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Monica, really?
Yes.
Thank you. I know that your team brought this policy before. It's because of one person, and they're inundated with a lot of cases, and they're wanting to get a little bit more of a breather in how they're making these assessments. So again, can you please reiterate that this change is not necessarily going to put us in a situation where the repercussions will be a liability?
I don't believe so, no. If I believed it was a liability, I would not bring this change forward.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had to ask a question. Yes, sir.
After hearing what Mr. Scales said, should we put somewhere in between 14 and 17 that accommodations can be met, can be made during the investigation?
Would you say that again, Mr. Tidwell?
Yes. So as Mr. Scales just said, his wife is operating in the zone, if I understood that correctly. And she said, he said that accommodations are made, you know, because it's up to 90 days.
Up to 120 days.
But accommodations can be made well in advance of that. Can we add that language, that accommodations can be made, so that we don't have an investigation lingering out up to 90 days without anything being done?
The law already says that supportive measures are put in place as soon as a complaint is filed, a report is filed.
So, so those actions?
That's something we automatically do.
Okay, good.
Yeah, supportive measures, that's, that's the verbiage in the federal law. Thank you. Yes, and it's on page two.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Hardeman?
Page five, line 34, where it says 10 days. Is that business or calendar?
That is a very good question, sir. 10 days from the date of written notice of appointment. And we took out 10 calendar days. Should we put back in calendar days? Mark is saying yes.
Yes, I agree.
I think, I, that's what I'm thinking. During the appeal process, the parties shall have.
Review business.
In calendar days.
Review business too.
Well, it was calendar. What does it say? Wait, see if we see calendar anywhere else. The night says calendar days. I think it needs to say one or the other.
Ms. Breton?
Yes.
Can I ask a clarification question to?
You can.
Monica?
Yes.
Okay, so the debate around calendar versus business. The calendar days is based on the RCS calendar. So that means if it's business, there may be some days the business may be open, but, but if it's an academic year, calendar.
No, I would, calendar days are Monday through Sunday, not RCS calendar days.
Okay, nevermind. I was thinking this is referring to the academic year calendar.
No.
So yes, I agree, should be business days then.
When it comes to the 10, I think it would be because if you, after the fall on that Friday.
Exactly.
With a written notice.
Mr. Hardeman, what do you think? You've made this suggestion. Would you like to go with business? Would you like to make that motion, sir?
Make a motion. Line 34, page 5, during the appeal process, parties should have a reasonable 10 business days.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We were voting on the change in language. Page 5, line 34, 10 business days. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Do I have anyone wishing to abstain? That passes. Now we will go back to the motion. Do I have a, do I have any more discussion before I move on? Do I have a motion?
Move to, second.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I have two no's. Anyone wishing to abstain? The motion passes. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Next policy is, oh, these are the fun ones. Four point.
Just a moment. I would like to move these to the end. Let's get everything else out of the way, because we're going to have some good discussion on this. And I think, if you're, everybody knew we were going to be a little tired tonight, right? But we've got three policies to look at, and, and I think we've got some state stuff to put in and so forth and so on. So I'd like to take the three library material policies and put them at the end. Sorry, Caitlin. And let's get everything else. And let's get everything else discussed and voted on and we will come back to that. So take the next twenty-eight pages and turn them over. We can probably quickly go through.
Okay, so that would bring us to new policies, which is three point two zero five one, School Resource Officers' Involvement and Curriculum Implementation. And you'll see there's two policies for that one as well, and this was, and, and forgive me if this is confusing, I tried not to make it confusing. But we had one, uh, version of this postponed from our last meeting, so that is the one with the little number one on top. And then the second one, just add some new language that was proposed. And so in order to keep the record clean, this was the only way that I could think of, um, to do it so that everyone knew kind of where we were.
So number two is a copy of number one, adding D, am I correct?
Yes, you are correct.
Questions or concerns about these policies?
Ms. Breiten?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so I brought both of them, the one that, the number one, um, that was what was proposed that I had, so presented before the policy committee and then we voted on the academic year. And then we postponed this because, this policy because of the curriculum had not been approved by the board. Um, since the, the proposed, since putting this, uh, since postponing policy, the board has approved the curriculum that will be part of this policy. Um, since it, secondly, since, since this was also postponed, I met with the SRO, um, with, um, Hendrix and, um, Captain Berry, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Carey, sorry, Carey. I was, I got his name confused for a second. Um, and they were suggesting that for the section at the middle school and high school and letter D, that for, it would be easier to implement this during the freshman English class because they, every freshman has to have an English class and that will be the easiest way to implement that. And so then I went back and included this language to add to the policy and now you have the revised policy with that letter D. So I just wanted to update the, the board and the policy of where we were at.
And I like that it says can be used, there might be some switching around, but every single student in the school has to take freshman English. So that's how you hit every single student in the school. Also, this is gonna let kids know in the very beginning, don't make an invalid mass Holland's threat, don't, I mean, all of that, from what we have learned with safety training over the past year, I think passing that information on to students is a very important aspect of that. Well, well, yeah, you'll be back.
I'm frustrated that we don't talk about nine eleven. We don't talk much like we should. And I think the SROs is a great opportunity to talk about nine eleven, what happened and help because these students don't know and a lot of their parents don't talk about it either. It's not like it was, things have changed in the last ten to fifteen years and they need to know. I'm the wife of a veteran who served in Afghanistan, I know why we went over there, I know what happened and all of us remember what happened on nine eleven, we saw the Twin Towers. These high school kids have no idea. And I want them to know what's going on. So I would like to see, do we have to, I was hoping to ask him, is this curriculum that, that, that we have to approve as a board? There is a, there is a documentary that's about two hours long that was shown on CNN and PBS and it's, uh, it shows everything from the minute the first towers were hit to real-time communications with like TV reports, people on the, and, and you see everything come along. These kids have no idea what happened because they were born after nine eleven. I'm discussing what I came to you and Patty about nine eleven and having our SROs do that at all the schools. And I think sixteen to eighteen-year-olds, they can watch this and they can see how horrific it is and they need to know, those little dots coming down to the ground, yes, those are people. Those are people that chose to jump out of that building rather than burn to death or whatever horrific end was gonna befall them. And so I, is this something that we have to bring to you, or, or can the SROs just say, this is what I want to do?
Yeah. Might I suggest?
Mm-hmm.
That you talk to the, some of the SROs about this?
They're all, I already have, they're all on board.
Might I suggest that you come back with a policy?
Okay.
I don't think it goes here.
I was like, do we have to?
Yeah, you have to.
We have to approve this, obviously.
But I would like to get it, is there time to get it done for nine eleven this September? Nope, you don't have time, yeah.
It is.
In junior year.
Junior year, but not?
But not only in junior year, the, none of the other kids are getting it.
Uh, I'm sorry, I meant high school. I'd like to, I would like to do this every year, so they're, it's hammered into them, what happened. They need to recognize nine eleven as nine eleven, not just part of history.
Got you.
Did you attach it to remember, do you remember, say for it? Maybe we could make up somehow a program to go along with some?
Well, that's kind of what I was saying, that when I spoke with the head of the SROs, that's what he was saying. He, they've actually been waiting for someone to say, hey, we need to do something because we haven't been recognizing nine eleven in high schools.
I don't think it belongs in this.
No, because that's what I wanted to know. Do I, is this something that I have to bring as, or can we just do it as a special?
I think you can do it as a special something, but I do think we need to know what's being done. Because we approve curriculum, that's just one of our thoughts, so there you go.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Is that okay? With everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so back to the policy, we have one and two. Are there any more questions or concerns and then I will take a motion on? No, I'm going to take a motion, I would like to make a motion to adopt policy number one or policy number two. Will that work? Okay, so I will entertain a motion. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So with the freshman English classes, Ms. Rosales, you know, that is one of our seven tested subject areas for high school. I understand the importance of freshmen, I'd say we really need this freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year. We have so many students that may or may not be there their freshman year, that come different years. Uh, Mr. Creasy can maybe speak to advisory programs or our homerooms or just part of our introductions at the beginning of the year, actually when they come back after Christmas. I know when I was in the classroom, it's, it's a restart because you had two weeks off and so we want to remember the rules. Um, so it's something that we kind of do throughout the year. Um, and as long as we use the word may, I think we're okay because it doesn't limit us to have to do it in the freshman courses. But I just wanted to remind you that freshman English class is a tested subject area for our high schools. Um, there's some other requirements each year that every kid's taking, you know, and so I think we can hit it in advisory, homeroom and have a part of that as our procedures.
So we can add that language?
Place of freshman English.
All right. Homerooms? What else did you say, Larry? Class meetings? Can be used to set, and, and can or may, still doesn't limit you. If you decide you want to do the freshman English class, you can do it. Do you want to take that out or do you want to leave it? What do you want to do? Take it out?
Cleaner. Do homerooms, class meetings?
May be used.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll vote on that language.
Because I could make the argument for health, wellness, JFOTC.
See, I could too, all that, right? I think there are lots of places that it can be done. I just want the principal to be able to decide where it should be done.
Also with our four by four, you know, some students may not have English one until the second semester, so you'd be going a whole semester before those students were exposed to that information.
I think beginning of the school year is the important part of this, you just want it to make sure it's in it. Dr. S, yes ma'am?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, um, that, it was just a suggestion by the SROs. However we, it gets done, that's really up to the principal to work with the SRO and what's the best way to utilize it for that.
A motion on your language, please.
Yeah. Move to approve homeroom and class meetings as instead in striking freshman English.
Maybe, and should we say it to may, let's change it to may be used, okay? And do we have a second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? The new language is added, now we will look at the entire policy.
Madam Chair?
Yes ma'am.
And, and Dr. Martin may need to fix my, my English, but should we move, since the, at the beginning of the school year is the most important part in the way that it's at the end now, should that be at the beginning of that sentence? Because the way that I'm reading that?
That would be my preference if you asked.
It just sounds like the behavior that can lead to serious repercussions at the beginning of the school year. So I'm almost reading it like?
If you do this at the beginning of the school year, you're in trouble, otherwise you're good.
Right.
So you want to move the prepositional phrase at the beginning of the school year?
That's fine.
Said that for Kay.
Move to approve.
At the beginning of the school year, homerooms. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anyone wishing to abstain? We will move the two prepositional phrases, the beginning of the school year to the beginning of D.
Thank you.
Now.
Oh, we're still not done.
We're still not done, Dr. Sullivan.
I thought we were done with that.
I'm trying to keep up with this, all right. Now, we need a motion to adopt policy number two.
Move to approve policy number two.
Do I have a second? Are there any more questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Policy number two with the new language has been adopted.
Do we need to do something with policy number one?
No. We adopted number two. I put it all in one cover. So now family life education, which is new state law, right?
New state law, this would be a new policy for us, policy four point two one three, family life education. It is a policy for instruction on the family life curriculum. I did reach out to the TS, TSBA about, um, some language in the proposed policy that I wanted to double check because that's not what state law says. So I want to bring that to y'all's attention. Um, on the last page, lines nineteen and twenty, says the director shall also report on the curriculum selected by the Board of Education. What the public chapter and then state law says is that the curriculum is selected by the LEA and then reviewed and approved by the local Board of Education. So that language doesn't really match in what the model policy says. If you'd like me to repeat?
So what do we need to change?
My proposal would be to change, uh, on lines nineteen and twenty, the director shall also report on the curriculum selected by the Board of Education. That needs to say, the curriculum is selected by the LEA and reviewed and approved by the board.
Hey, would you repeat that? The curriculum is approved by the LEA?
Selected.
Curriculum is selected by the LEA?
And reviewed and approved.
By the LEA?
By the board.
It's the way we do all other curriculum.
Right.
This is from public chapter five seventy-one and then TCA forty-nine six thirteen oh four, which is the family life instruction.
And we will strike, the director shall also report the curriculum, because we're gonna know that.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, the curriculum is selected by the LEA and approved by the board. Let's quickly vote on that language, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, anyone opposed? No? Abstain? No? New language is approved. Now, the entire policy, which follows state law, am I correct?
Yes ma'am.
All right, are there questions or concerns about family life education?
Ms. Breiten?
Yes ma'am, yes sir.
On, uh, page two, fourteen to fifteen, personnel providing family life instructions shall receive training prior to presenting such instruction, personnel shall conduct such instruction with maturity and discretion. Uh, what kind of training is required? And is there a standard here or just any training we'll do?
Doesn't that depend on the curriculum?
That's, that's why I'm kind of.
Yeah.
It would, it would be dependent upon the curriculum selected by the LEA, which would then be approved by the board.
By the board.
And then that training would be?
And then there could be special training, probably there's some special training involved.
There should be because nobody wants to touch this topic without it.
That's right.
Without some, right.
And then the lines eleven and twelve, uh, the annual review, does that happen every September? Is that when that is? I think that's what the?
Provided by, in foreign state law.
I'd have to look, my guess is I probably have to submit that to the Department of Children's Services by August thirty-first. That's usually my deadline for all E-Plan things, so it would be before that.
Okay.
It could be September, I'm just thinking the way that the Department of Education usually does is August thirty-first or September first.
Sounds good.
Anything else? You weren't, you weren't trying to change any language, you were just asking a question. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Clarify.
Okay. Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Anyone wishing to abstain? Family life education passes, use of AI intelligence.
Next new policy is policy four point two one four, use of artificial intelligence programs. I did have, um, our instruction department, take a look at, um, this one, they did have some suggested changes.
Is this state law?
This is, yes ma'am.
I thought so.
Never in a million years I think we'd be putting in policy that a computer program could do work for us. Here we are.
Well?
I mean, I know that's the day and age and I just blows my mind that we are there.
Okay, so here are some suggested changes. And again, this is the model policy from TSBA, so right now it's, it's pretty vanilla. Um, but page two, line six, where it asks us to insert, um, any other local expectations, the following language has been requested, the instructional technology department will make AI training available to employees who wish to use AI with students. Would you like me to repeat that?
Please.
The instructional technology department will make AI training available to employees who wish to use AI with students. And on the same page, line twenty-four, where it asks us to insert method, posting on the website, inclusion in the student handbook. The requested language, an approved list of AI programs will be provided on the RCS instructional technology website. And Ms. Breiten, I've got it up here also if, if that's easier for you.
I got it. So we're adding two things from the instructional department, right?
And then, let's see.
Chastain, was that it? Okay. That it? Okay.
I love that the state law went into effect and the reporting date on the exact same date. So that's nice, we already had a compliance for that, because it went into effect and then had to be reported on the same day. Really, really appreciate.
We'll worry about that next year.
Oh well. So we are adding two caveats to the AI program concerning instructional technology department and an approved list. I'll entertain a motion to add that language. Thank you, thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? The language has been added. We will now look at the entire policy. Do we have any more questions or concerns? I promise you're going to get a break. I'm trying to get to the end. For library. None of you have, none of you can leave during the break. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
No, this, we're still on AI.
We're on AI. I'm so sorry. She's already gone. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? AI is approved.
Madam Chair, for the record, who seconded that motion?
I did, I think.
Ms. Rosales.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And, one more, very quickly, hopefully, and then you're gonna take a break.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, yes.
Opioid.
Opioids. Opioid antagonists, policy six point four zero five, this is a new policy pursuant to change in state law. And it would add a policy for the possession and maintenance of opioid antagonists. And for the, for any of those that don't know, this is talking about.
Narcan.
Narcan.
Now, did you have a question?
I can't do anything about this law, this law, and from what I understand, it came from somebody here in North Carolina. But the only problem I have is.
Is the school district staff shall not leave any student, employer, visitor. I have a problem with employees, I know all the teachers have them, and this, through the miracle of modernization, we can do things we couldn't do ten years ago. But allowing a student, I think it's wrong, allow a student to have narcan on, on our school grounds, at our events, is sending a message that you can do whatever you need to do, don't worry about it, narcan won't worry about it.
And that is right here in my thought.
And that is the wrong message, just in my mind. This one is, I just want you to know on record, I don't approve of this at all, but it is policy, so it is.
Back to you, I'm sorry. Anyone else?
And there's no, there's no way around making changes to it at all.
No, it's law.
If you look on lines nine, ten, and eleven, that, that language is in the new state law that says that school district staff will not prohibit a student, employer, visitor from possessing this while on school property.
And it's the state that we have trouble with.
It's the student, but I have a problem with it. I, I'm happy with staff having, it's something you're concerned with. I just think that was a bad decision to allow students to have it.
Anybody else? I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Opioid antagonist passes. We will take a ten minute break. Thank you. I'm so sorry that I didn't do that a little sooner, bless your hearts. All right, we have one last policy to look at. We only have three versions. And, it's, it's quite extensive. I, I'm going to say this, Mr. Tedwell. I like what we have better than anything else that I've looked at. Now, somebody else may feel differently, but I feel like, yes, it was gutting. Yes, we worked very hard on this. Yes, we, we didn't always agree, but we came to consensus. And I think what we finally ended up with was something that has worked better than in other districts. So it is my suggestion that we use our current policy as the backbone for what we want, no, for what we have, not what we want, but what we have to add in here. Does that seem like a good way to approach this?
I believe so.
You, you think so? Isn't number three our current policy?
So, Madam Chair, let me, let me explain for some, for everyone. Because again, I tried to not make this confusing, but I think I confused myself.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, we understand.
All right, so number one is the model policy from TSBA pursuant to changes in state law.
Okay.
And there have been some changes in state law. Specifically spells out what materials have to be removed and excluded from the library collection, okay? So that's number one. Number two is postponed from our meeting in March. And that one added the ability for parents to opt in for a mature reading list. Okay? And then number three adds a restricted reading list, which I think is similar to number two. But again, to try to keep things clean on when we, what the versions were when we postponed them and whatnot. This was the only way that I could think of to do it, so.
I think you did a great job.
I can pull up our current policy. If you wanted to.
Is in our current policy, number three?
Well, it's number two and number three, just without the yellow highlights. That would be the new language that is added to our current policy in both number two and number three.
Number two and number three?
Yes ma'am.
But there are no strikers, so nothing's removed.
Nothing is removed, this is just added, correct.
But number one.
Yes.
Is what the state says that we have to add to our policy, am I correct?
Correct.
Such as line number two, the person shall be responsible for library collection development. That's all new.
No, we already have that in our current one. Right now we have the assistant superintendent, so we still have the old title for Dr. Chastain.
Okay.
But that is in our current one.
Okay.
Really what's new is, line four. The list of new materials, I'm sorry, line four.
Yeah.
And then the.
Next state law.
Yes.
Okay.
And the standards, including the materials which meet certain criteria, have to be removed and excluded. And that's the lines twenty-five. And the rest is pretty similar, because we have a complaint procedure.
And a review process.
Mm-hmm.
May not be as bad as we think. It may not be, Caleb?
All right, yes, so I reached out to TSBA to get some feedback on this. The first one, option one, is obviously TSBA's version of it. They, I was told that our policy that we already have in effect was used as kind of a standard for this. So we are a little bit ahead of the game here. As Monica mentioned, we would have to add in on option one, we would have to add in that line four, prior to the purchase of new materials, librarians shall review the age and maturity level along with the reading level of the selected items for suitability. So that would have to be added in. I did have a question here, and Ms. Branton brought this up, maybe I overlooked it on our policy, if it's already existing, but insert title of employee, obviously assistant of curriculum probably, shall be responsible periodic, for periodically reviewing the district's library collection in line with the standards established below. Are you saying that's already in ours? Because I don't think that I saw that.
No, what we have is the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, whoops, will be responsible for library collection development. And then library materials shall be reviewed to ensure the content aligns with state law and materials, and that the materials have not been removed previously.
Thank you. And so for me, I, I like the way that it's written a little bit better on seven, that she'll be, shall review periodically the libraries, library collection, because here it just says, it shall be reviewed, but it doesn't give any type of timeframe whatsoever. So that would be one thing, those would be two items that I would like to see added to our current policy. Other than that, there was a change in the, the law. I think it was surrounding obscenity, where it talked about, I have it written down here, the law changes included language that suggests if the content in the book is found to be obscene, and then, it used to be when taken as a whole, they added as, when taken as a whole or in part. So I'd like to see that language added as well. That was some. So I'm not on, I'm not on a line.
Okay.
No, but there was a law that was passed, went into effect July first, and what it required was a change in the language, which says that if obscene content is found, it used to say when taken as a whole, and now says when taken as a whole or in part. So I can get that from TSBA to share that with you, Monica, as well. That was sent to me by TSBA, so. Outside of that, that's the only things that I think could be added. Otherwise, I feel like ours is working the way that it should. As far as on option three, there is a restricted reading list. I'll tell you my concerns with this, and I'm speaking to everybody, here's my concerns. This restricted reading list should only apply to age appropriate material. If it's obscene or sexually explicit, the law says to take it out. Okay, so we're not gonna violate the law by putting a, a material that violates obscene or sexually explicit on a restricted reading list. So my suggestion would be on option three, which is, like you said, other than, other than the highlighted portion is similar to what we already have. If we add the committee or the, and this is lines fourteen on page three of option three. The committee or the director of schools or board on appeal may put the, it says material, I think we should add age appropriate material in the restricted reading list and require the age appropriate material to be accessible to those students that have written permission from their parent or guardian. I don't know if on page four, if that, if that needs to be added to line three as well in front of the materials.
Madam Chair? Can I ask? The restricted or mature reading list is not part of the state law, correct?
Correct.
I'm just curious, like what, what the purpose is of those? Like are we, are we finding material that's in between? Like the explicit and appropriate for any age, and that's where those things are falling?
Can I follow that up?
Wait, Ms. Branton?
I think originally I was supportive of the restricted materials list, because there was some vagueness in the way that the law was written. Now that that has been clarified and involves a part, not just the whole, I think it somewhat makes that obsolete.
I will, I will say, one of the reasons I was asking is because I don't know if it would be beneficial to, to vote on whether we want to include those things or not before we start talking about all these language changes. And part of my reasoning and asking too, is I think it places an extra burden on our librarians to have to keep track of those types of things. I'm kind of a fan of, it's either appropriate to be in a school building, or it's not. And if it's not, there are other places for people to get those, if, if that's what they want to read, or they want their kids to read. But that's just my school of thought.
My concern would be if we said that it was inappropriate to be in the library, because it was not following state law. But yet, then we allowed somebody to check it out anyways on a mature list, I feel like that's kind of like, like you're saying, I feel like that's a little bit contradictory.
Ms. Branton? I have a question. So what about the books that were challenged and they were deemed, they were retained in certain grade bands? There's about nine of them. I don't have a list of them, but one of them was Handmaid's Tale. And that was retained in, to a certain grade band. So what are we gonna do with the books that have already been challenged? Because the state law also says, once a book has been challenged and there's been a determination, you can't re-challenge, you can't challenge that at all. So you only get, so what are we gonna, what's gonna happen to the books that have already been challenged, but they do not fall? They fall in the age appropriateness.
Yeah, to me, they'll stay where they are, because nothing else can be done.
Right, so they stay where they are, right, so that, so then having a, the restricted, they were put in a restricted access and the parent, access to them, then the parents will have the choice to make the final decision whether they want it or not. Because it's still in part, it still has stuff that may fall on the, on the law.
Are they restricted though, or are they just appropriate for middle school and above? I guess would be the question.
They were middle school or above at this point. The rest of them had been removed and they wouldn't be available, because there was no mature reading list.
So they would just be pulled from elementary school and left on the shelves in middle and high school?
Yes, but then there may be content that may not be suitable for sixth grader. Like for example, there was a book that we had for eight, it was in eight through eleven years old. And the theme of it was, I believe in my opinion, was to, was to, was not appropriate for eight through eleven. But it was moved to a middle school in that sixth grade. And some kids are, how old are kids in sixth grade?
They're usually about eleven, eleven to twelve.
Yeah, exactly. And that, that content in there, I, in my opinion, as a parent, now, it, it can, different parents may disagree, and that's fine. But I, as a parent, will have not allowed my child to read that book.
Right, but I think the question is, if it's a book that's been challenged, and it goes through that committee, and that committee says this is appropriate for sixth grade and up, then it's not a restricted or mature themed book. They have deemed it appropriate for sixth and above, and according to what you just said, it can't be challenged again, so that's just where it sits.
Right, but then we move it to where we give the parent the final say so, they have, we give the parents the option, the choice to say we will allow, we will, we're the ones who make that final decision.
But, but how are you, are you going through every book in the library?
No, it's just the ones that have been challenged. If a book was challenged and the committee determined whatever, but it still has content that is questionable, then the parent makes the final decision at the end of day.
So then are you suggesting that we submit lists to the parents of those books that have been challenged to let them know which ones they have?
Well, if you read the, read the paragraph, it said to put the list on the website. To have it available for parents to see on the website, you can.
But are, would we not be, can you correct me, would we not be going against state law then, though? If it has gone through that process, and the committee has said sixth and up, and then you pull it and put it on a restricted shelf where parents have to give permission, I would be concerned that we're then in violation of state law. I'm all about, there are a lot of books I think are inappropriate for student level, but I'm just trying to, to find a, a marriage between what we're trying to do, state law, and all of those things.
Well, we have to remember this changed. When we started this this year, this was not what the law said.
Right.
So now we have a, a different.
More clarification.
Slant, slant on the law. I too saw exactly what you meant and understood what you meant, but now I, with the new law, I'm afraid. I'm afraid that we would be against the law.
Yeah.
I have a restricted list.
Yeah.
All right, so, yes, I'm okay with keeping as much of the original as possible, and not doing the restricted reading list. Plus, we have in here during the library review committee, that if we, there's an option to restrict it to grade bands. So, for instance, if there is an elementary book that shouldn't be in elementary schools, but it's okay for middle schools, it can be restricted, that band. That is not a restricted reading list type option.
No, it's a restricted band.
Yeah, and so, so, we're still abiding by the law. We were doing that prior. I don't think we need to add any additional language to that.
Well, I know what she did at first, and it made sense.
It's fine, it's whatever the committee-
But with the law changing like this, we don't want to be in violation of the new law.
Sure. Agreed.
The least amount of stuff we can change would be preferable.
Ms. Breiten?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. So, there's another thing that's missing, that should be included here, if we're going to follow the law. The new law also states that if books have not been reviewed by the committee within 60 days, then the appeals can go toward, to the, the State Department of Education, to the textbook instruction omission. And that is something that needs to be written in there.
Really?
Yes.
But it's not in, we don't see that in here?
No, but that is part of the new law. The new laws, the law also states that if, if within 60 days, the books have not been reviewed by the committee, then the challenger has the option to take that book and appeal it, and have it challenged, reviewed by the textbook instruction omission. And it was back, it was one of the sponsored bills, Susan Lynn.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Well, this hasn't been voted on.
Can I, can I suggest?
Yes.
Maybe we can vote on it. Having Ms. Ridley let us know what would need to be added to our current policy, the way it is, to be in line with state law? Like, only the necessary changes for, to be in compliance with state law?
Yes, ma'am, you may suggest that. How would that work?
Ms. Redd?
Uh-huh.
If I'm understanding correctly, that would just be the change to line four of option, option one, which includes, that's the, "Prior to purchase of new material, librarian shall review the age and maturity level." That has a notation outside to it, so I imagine that's directly from state law? If you're looking at option one.
After the purchase of new materials?
Yes.
I mean, I think we have to put that in here.
You're saying that we think we have to, I'm sorry?
So, would we replace-
Do we have that specifically?
The word "prior" is not in the state law.
Oh, it's not prior?
I just did a Ctrl+F for public chapter, and the word "prior" is not in it.
Okay.
I'm reading it to make sure, but Ctrl+F didn't find it.
So, Caleb, are you saying we would need to replace our line four with the beginning of what's at policy, on the number one policy?
Well, I was, I was suggesting that that, we might need to replace it, but as Dr. Sullivan just said, the word "prior" is not in the new law. That would be a major reason for replacing that line, would be if it's at prior. Not, we could-
But it's not there, right?
But it's, he's saying it's not there.
Okay. Was there, not there? It's kind of like the rest of this law.
[laughing]
All right.
I mean, it makes sense, why would you not review them first?
Yeah, catch it on the front end. I'm going to make a motion that we do add that line in. I think it's appropriate. I think it matches what we're trying to do here at the school. That would be adding in line four of the first option, which is, "Prior to the purchase of new materials, librarian shall review the age and maturity level, along with the reading level of the selected items for suitability." That is my first motion, as far as language.
Do you want to, are you looking at adding a list of new materials should be reviewed by blank? Or leaving that out?
We already have that.
We already have that.
We already have that.
Who is that?
Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Okay. Chief Academic Officer?
Yep.
CAO?
I like the old titles better. That was, I'd like to go back and change. I like the old titles better, I can't get used to them.
Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Currently, I'm in charge of collection development, and so, we do have a, we do have a procedure in place where we, librarians go through and look at age appropriateness now, before they purchase anything, so it's part of our current procedure, as is an annual review. We do trust the librarians in the school level to decide what is appropriate for their collections, and then we review them annually. So, that would be a change from our current procedures, if the central office is having to approve every title.
That is a, that would be a ridiculous task.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that.
And that makes sense.
This is, "Prior to the purchase of new material, librarian shall review the age and maturity level."
She said they agree that.
Okay, well, I'm saying-
I heard you.
You're listed on line 17 and 18.
Yep.
Of the current policy. Collection shall be responsible for periodically reviewing the district's library collection in line with these established standards.
And currently, Charlie is?
Correct. I was talking about on the TSB, on the number one, line five, where it says, "A list of new materials shall be reviewed by," I was just cautioning that that shouldn't be the central stuff.
Yeah, that'd be rough.
Correct.
Yeah, and we're, I don't think we're even adding that portion.
Perfect.
I think we already have something in there for that. I was just simply mentioning prior, the line starting with prior, line four, sentence starting with prior, and then with suitability, which we are currently already doing, I'm just wanting to put it in policy.
Where are you?
Yes.
Where are we at?
Well, our current policy, so technically, it's not policy three, because policy three has the restricted reading list.
Exactly. Back to the policy.
Yeah, there you go. Our, our original policy.
Go back and look at restricted.
Yes.
Be just a month.
Caleb, where are you adding that?
I would like to add that, well, can we pull up our current policy?
There you want it.
That's going to be the easiest to go from current.
Are you wanting to put it before, "Library materials shall be reviewed," on line five?
Yes, is this, this is our current policy up on the screen right now?
Yes.
Yes, please. So, that'd be line five, before library materials. And again, this is just established in policy, what we're already doing.
So, the question is, how should I put it? Number five, line six, is that what I'm looking for?
No, line five.
Oh, line five, I'm so sorry. Number five.
It's okay, there's a lot of paper here.
All right. Where are we, number six?
So, on our current policy, it'd be line five, right in front of, "Library materials shall be reviewed."
Prior.
We're going to add the, yes, the prior part. I put a motion on the floor, is it okay if we get a second?
We put a motion on-
Just for that language.
All right, then I need a second.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion on this before we go on adding a line, "Prior to the purchase of new materials, librarian shall review the age and maturity level, along with the reading level of the selected items for suitability." Line five, that's why we put, I guess, should be, but I know where we are. All right.
Aye.
Done. You want to discuss that? We will add that to the current policy. Now, we can go back, and we are going to decide whether or not we need to put in the restricted reading list.
I'd like to make a motion, and we use our current policy for pointing, 403 is the background for the changes we are making that Monica has, instead of reviewing all these different versions.
Second.
Anyone like to discuss that? I'll have to say aye. Anyone wishing to extend, we will use our current policy and just the leading and that, is that what you said?
Yes, now, we'll take that one, is what we're working with. Sorry, Monica, I know that just threw you off. No, it's none of those. Monica's got it up here.
None of those. I think it's, all right.
All right. Whatever's in the same policy, it absolutely has to go in our policy.
Okay, so, the, the standard, starting on line 11 on page one, all the way through lines 22?
Those are not in?
No, they are. We already have those.
All right.
They are in our current policy, if you look on lines eight through 16, we've, we've already got those.
All right.
They're, they're verbatim.
All right. We don't have to do them.
Already got it.
Okay. What else?
The language, starting with 23, we kind of have a version of that.
Thank you. Whoops, I forgot my number. 23?
23 down to the, the second page. We have that under, a version of that. On our current, let's, let's look up here. Our current-
I think it's on the last page.
Yeah, page three.
It is, yes. Removals of library materials. And this is, this is the "in whole or in part," Mr. Tidwell, that you were talking about?
Yes.
That's where that-
The line is found?
Yeah.
We need to make that change.
So, we need to add "in whole or in part," as per state law?
Because that's in here. See? In state law, here it is. "In whole or in part" contains nudity, or descriptions, depictions of sexual excitement, sexual conduct, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So, that has to be added?
Yes.
So, where does it need to be added?
It was line 23, materials that meet the following criteria, "in whole or in part" shall be reviewed. Line 23.
Of version one? So, what are you talking about, version one?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Say it again, Jim.
So, page one, line 23, "New materials that meet the following criteria," we would add in, "in whole or in part," shall be included from the library.
Ms. Ridley, which one of these three policies is closest to our current policy? One, two, or three?
Number two or number three is our policy, except for the highlighted sections. That's the new language that was proposed last-
Okay, so, can we all work off of number three? Because I think there's still a lot of confusion as to what everybody's looking at. And we can just scratch out the-
Highlighted part.
The highlighted parts at the end with the restricted reading list.
We can't scratch it out until we-
Well, ignore it for now.
Ignore it for, there you go. I like that.
And so, this is the state law you have up on the screen, is that correct? So, we're looking at B, number one, and where in the current policy we need to insert that language, is that correct?
Right.
Line 23.
It's on page three, lines 22, 23.
Well, if you look at number two, 10 through 12, it has some of the new language.
But we're working, we, we just said we were going to work on number three.
Number three, yeah. But on three, it's got mature things, such as, "I detect a contact," hoping language is sensitive. So, what is not in here, what's here? We'll take that included in-
Well, but she's going from actual state law. So, that's really, am I correct, that that's really what it has to say? Because that is the state law language?
It, it does, it just doesn't have the "in whole or in part" in the TSBA model policy. But it's, it still says that.
Well, because this has, like, sexual excitement, I don't think our-
That's in there.
Our current policy?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. We've, we've gone through the policy.
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, yes, it's there.
A little worried, Jim.
Oh, there it is. It's further, it's further.
TCA 39, six, what? 11, yeah, 911, because-
Here, here, this is our, this is our current-
Hey, the definitions are there, too. You need me to read those.
We're losing, we're losing it.
That's why.
We've lost it. Here, here's our current policy, it's right here.
So, on line 19, do we need to say, "Which depicts in whole or in part?" Or do we need to start the paragraph? Like, is it "Any picture in whole or in part?" Or do we want to say, "Which depicts nudity in whole or in part?"
This is not match, but it would be involved.
Right. So, it needs to start as a new paragraph, right on 18, instead of saying, "Any picture," can we add it there? I don't, you move the, where is this, where is this "in part" and "not part"?
It says, "A material that in whole or in part contains nudity."
So, where, I'm sorry, it's page three, but where do you think that best fits? Did you say 22 or 23?
I would just change this, it's starting with "any book," I would just say, "Any material which in whole or in part contains," and then start, "Nudity, descriptions, depictions, blah, blah, blah."
Okay.
So, between lines 17 and 18, you're putting-
In whole.
-any material in whole or in part. That's what it says.
Yeah.
In part. Got you. Is literary merit, I'm going to use it in? In nudity?
No. They removed it.
It's a good thing I'm coming. We're looking at page three.
I, I have too many versions, I'm sorry. Okay, right, right here. Any book?
The one in section two.
Yes. That's right. Change that to "any material."
In whole.
I would like to bring it, because I know there's going to be a lot of confusion around this, so I'm reading the public chapter, 782, that TSBA sent out.
Right.
So, it references the definitions in 39, 17, 901.
Right.
I'm not aware of any changes to 39, 17, 901, because it still says, "Obscene means that the work taken as a whole lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value." Because I can see members of the public coming up and saying that art books need to be removed, statues that have depictions, or any book, nudity or anything. We still have the definitions obscene, because the public chapter talks about, "In a whole or in part contains-" in a whole or in part contains nudity as those terms are defined in thirty-nine seventeen nine oh one. So there's still thirty-nine seventeen nine oh one where our definitions come from. So just to make that public, just because a book talks about nudity or has that does not mean it automatically gets removed.
You could have Michelangelo's David. You're not going to remove that from a high school library.
Or a book that talks about it. It has to then go meet the definitions in thirty-nine seventeen nine oh one. Which I don't think changed.
Ms. Breton? Monica? Sorry. Oh, you're okay. So Monica, Bill HB zero eight four three is the one that talks about having sixty days to review.
It's in here also. It's in this public chapter. I think I found it while you were saying.
Okay, great. I would like to add that there to the policy as well.
Yeah. It says sixty days from the date at which the feedback was received, and the student's parent or guardian or school employee who submitted feedback on the material may request the state textbook and instructional materials quality commission to evaluate the material pursuant to forty-nine six twenty-two oh one M one D.
Ms. Breton.
I make a motion to add the language about if the public... I'm sorry.
I know. I'm sorry. I'm making moans and groans over here. I don't want anybody to hear. Go ahead, Mr. Rosales.
You're tired. It's okay.
I'm tired. Okay. We're all tired. Okay, but this makes sense. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I make a motion to add the language pursuant to HB eight forty-three, to add the language. If a local board of education or public charter school or any body does not make a determination within sixty days from the date at which the feedback was received, then the student's parent or guardian or school employee who submitted feedback on the material may request the state textbook and instructional materials quality commission to evaluate the material. Period. So basically, it's just copy that.
That's a motion.
Yeah, that's a motion.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, can I suggest nine under complaints? It would fall right after it says the decision of the committee may be appealed, and director of schools shall report committee's decision to the board. Board may review. And it's right before appeals to the director and the board?
So we're adding the law on six... I'm just going to put law on sixty days. So I'll know where it goes.
So it would be page two, line thirty-eight. We would add a number nine?
Right.
With Ms. Rosales's motion?
Motion, right. So we need to vote on the motion? Any more discussion? That's a good place for it, Ms. Darby. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those no? Anyone wishing to abstain? We will be adding number nine on page two, the law on sixty days.
Question though, because this is if a local education does not make a determination within sixty days. So this is after it goes to the board, does it not?
Yes, and that would go against number six.
Right. And then the decision of the board is final. Well, not really, apparently.
Ms. Breton, so I called the office to ask clarification. So what it's supposed to do is that if a... If someone challenges a book, and there's no movement on it, there's supposed to be sixty days for it to go through the process. If it doesn't go through the process at all within those sixty days, for whatever reason, then at that point, the challenger has the option to take it up to the textbook commission, because we didn't... It didn't go through the process within sixty days.
So it would fall after the committee.
Complaints.
Because if it comes to the board, it's an appeal of the committee's decision.
Right. Yeah. Didn't make it to the board.
It didn't make it to the board. It's not... Yeah.
I think I got that. Okay.
Ms. Breton.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to vote on the language that we added on page three about any material in whole or in part?
Did we vote on it? Uh huh.
We did. I'm making... No, you're good. I'm making that motion to add the language.
You made the motion, and we did not vote on it. I'd like to vote on that motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Anyone wishing to leave?
Madam Chair?
I'm getting punchy. Yeah.
Dr. Martin just had a great suggestion. Instead of making that number nine as if it's a step in the complaint process?
Yes.
What if we just say in the case that no response has been received by sixty days, and then have the...
But in the law? I like that. Where do you want to just put it as a fresh sentence?
Just the number nine, that you just add that as a new paragraph before appeals to the director of schools in a sentence statement.
Take out number nine. It's not number nine.
Right. It won't be a number nine, because the process will already have happened. But in case that one through eight does not happen within sixty days.
We've never had that. Okay. So we got to vote on that. First, we got to go back and vote on the other one, right? Okay. Or did we vote on it?
You did.
I'm so glad.
You voted on it.
Thank you. Now, we are going to look at what Dr. Martin has said, which is to add, not as a number nine, just as a sentence, in case once the rate does not happen. Doesn't sound good, Kay. We got to work on that. In case there is no movement within sixty days, there is no decision within sixty days. How do y'all want to say that? Okay. In case no decision is made within sixty days, blah, 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 new law. Okay. Now...
I think I got that.
Okay. Kay, was that a motion? I need a second. Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Anyone wishing to abstain? That new language is now added.
Ms. Breton.
Okay.
I make a motion that we move the policy as we... All the changes that we've made, that we move forward with this policy.
Okay, except we need to look at removing the restricted list, because it... I like it, Ms. Rosales. I like what that says. And I know what you were trying to do, and it was a good idea, but it does go against the law. I mean, it goes against the new law, so...
I love what you wrote, Ms. Rosales.
So we need to make a mo... I need to hear a motion to remove the yellow highlighted areas.
I move to remove the second material.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Anyone wishing to abstain? I think we have a new policy.
Nope. We don't have a vote.
No. Can I second? No, no, no. Right, okay.
What else?
Only thing I want to bring up is our library review committee is working to some degree. It is working better than most places.
Yes.
It is very contentious.
Yes.
People are not necessarily speaking any longer in the meetings, because it basically turns into a political battlefield. I'd love to tell you something different, but that's... It comes into a political battlefield. And that's not the way it's supposed to be, and I like that we have the review committee instead. But the review meetings are... Have turned into about a three or four-minute meeting, I would say, the last one, because nobody's going to talk. Here's my submission, and we're done. A year. Change, yep. The way our country has, yeah. Nothing. I was just bringing that up for discussion. I still like it better, but I... I know Caitlin addressed it real quick. I hate to Caitlin or Kelly, they're there. I think it's good for the policy committee to know. Y'all want to... You have like a minute to tell us? Yes. What have been the concerns that I...
I think our suggestion at this point, and the committee members have served dutifully, I will say that, each and every one of them. After going through this for a year in good faith, I think if we didn't have to meet in person and could allow them to submit all their comments in a written format, would maybe be a little more sustainable.
I think that we have to do it in person, though, because it's a board-appointed committee, right? It doesn't have to be public?
We have an initial training at the beginning of the year. We have an initial training at the beginning of the year with our review committee on in-person with the process by which we undergo to review these materials according to our policy. I think the intent to meet was to collaborate on the result, and that collaboration is not happening. The meeting in person is not swaying or changing ultimately their vote and report that they submit.
I understand. It's not a law we have to meet.
I was told something had changed in like the public meeting law that said something about if the committees were appointed, they now had to be public meetings. I could be wrong.
That did change, but I think what the question is now is do they have to meet? Like, if they're all reviewing the books, do they have to meet?
I'm all for them not meeting. I'm just concerned with state... If state law is saying that if the committee is an appointed committee, that it has to be a public meeting, and you... The committee is submitting but not meeting, are we... Are we in accordance with the law? Mr. Reed?
Yes, can you come back and let us know, and we can look into that? Because when they make that kind of suggestion from the people who are in charge, I think we need to seriously consider what they have to say about it.
Can I second Mr. Tidwell's motion to move forward with the policy with the changes?
Yes, ma'am. You certainly might. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Thank you. I think Ms. Darby did second it, but that's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Anyone wishing to abstain? Anyone hate my guts? You're adjourned.